He alive?
All right, nope, not yet. There we go. Is it good?
Yep.
We'll call this meeting to order.
Roll call. Gerber.
Present.
McCauley.
Here.
McLaughlin.
Here.
Smith. Wright.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three are consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be action items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and interacted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the commission, member of city staff, or a citizen requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed on the regular agenda in a sequence determined by the rules of order. Any item on the consent agenda which contains written recommendations of approval from the City of Eagle Planning Staff, City of Eagle Staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, or Design Review Board shall be adopted as part of the city's, city council's consent agenda approval motion unless specifically stated otherwise. This has been rewritten.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number three C off.
Commissioner Gerber, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to verify with Mr. Williams that three C, I know we had had problems with it with notifications and things like that. I just wanted to make sure that this is one that's going through okay with notices and everything's been done correctly.
Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gerber, these findings are based off the second public hearing that was conducted due to the fact of a notice flaw that we had. So this, these are the findings of the last hearing.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Commissioner Gerber, any further questions or concerns?
That was enough. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, the consent agenda is before us.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McLaughlin.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, we've heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerber. Commissioners, we do have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is provided. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you vote aye as well, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on with our agenda for this evening. Item number four is unfinished business. We have none before us, so we'll move on to item number five. All public hearings are considered action items. Item five A is A-11-21/RZ-17-21/CU-11-21/PPUD-08-21/PP-18-21, Annexation Rezone Conditional Use Permit Preliminary Development Plan and Preliminary Plant for Soaring Feather Ranch Subdivision Sheridan Hodson. Mrs. Miller, or I guess you're not Mrs. Miller. I've got Katie Miller represents representation here, but you might be Katie, but I'm not going to say that, so.
Well, my name's Sheridan Hodson, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you, Chairman Wright. Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin, Commissioner Gerber, and Commissioner McCauley. And thank you for the staff for being here tonight. I'm really excited to present our project, Soaring Feather Ranch, to you tonight. I'm going to start out with a kind of a general overview of where the site's located, talk about some of the project's specific details, and then also cover some of the information that I know will be.
Excuse me, Mr. Hudson, my screen is not on.
Could you, lower right?
Oh, there we go.
Right here.
I've never had to turn it on. There it is. Thank you. I've never had to turn it on before. It's always been on. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No worries at all. Yeah, so, and then I'll wrap up trying my best to answer questions and address some of the things that were brought up during the neighborhood meeting and the steps that we've taken to address those. So I hope this will be one of the rare occasions where we've tried our best to go above and beyond to be accommodating to the surrounding neighbors. And I hope that they're happy with the outcome of the process, and hopefully they feel like everything worked as it's supposed to with the neighborhood meetings and preliminary meetings before we reach the P and Z meeting tonight. So Soaring Feather Ranch is a 17-acre development located, located between Linder and Park. It's to the north of Eagle High School, and it's also to the north of the Bellatera subdivision that exists, and to the south of Callaway Ranch. There is a new subdivision that's being put in right now to our east, and that's Brush Creek. And the property to our immediate west is private property owned by the Nuxell family. The proposed layout looks like what you see on the screen right now. And to give that reference, I'll let you look at it for a second. I'm going to flip and go through some of the details. But it's a 32-lot development, 28 single-family lots, one that already exists today, that's a newer home that the prior landowners had built, three common lots and one commercial lot subdivision. What we're asking for tonight is an annexation and rezone from the RUT, the Rural Urban Transition designation, to RE and R2-DA-P, which is residential, two units per acre with a development agreement. We're also asking for the approval of a conditional use permit, preliminary development plan approval, and preliminary plat approval. Here's an aerial view of what the neighborhood will look like. There is one minor adjustment to this that I'll cover in just a minute, but just to give you a conceptual, a conceptual aerial, aerial overview of what the project's going to look like. And here's another view to show you the layout. So some of the details of the zoning currently, as we mentioned, it's rural urban transition, in Ada County designation. The land's currently being used for agriculture. There is a primary residence on the site. They also do have a barn facility that they use to board horses and teach riding lessons from, and we want that to remain. That's the intent of the RE designation, is so that barn facility and riding arena that sits on approximately 3.07 acres can continue to exist and be used to board horses and to teach riding lessons into the future. As you'll see, there's a mixed use of different zonings around the site. To the north of the site, we have the Callaway Ranch subdivision, which is our RUT and R1 residential. To the south of the site, we have Bellatera subdivision, which is R2-DA-P residential with a development agreement, PUD. To the east of the site, that's transitioning, but currently it's a single-family residential and agricultural, RUT. But you do have the Brush Creek subdivision that's going in, that I believe is R2. And then to the west of the site where the Nuxell family lives, we have a single-family residential, RUT. Additional information on the site, we're proposing or asking for density that would be 1.65 dwelling units per acre across the entire PUD. There is some, there are several lots that are smaller than the 17,000 square foot half acre with a straight R2 planning designation. We're not going into that if you want more information on which, which lots they are. We do exceed the minimum lot width of 75. You'll see ours is 80 feet. Minimum street frontage, we do have 60 feet, and the requirement's 35. The total acreage of common area open space is 3.82 acres, and the requirement's 3.4. And then the percent of site that's open space is 27.5, and the requirement is 20%. And then percent of common area open space that's active, we have 16.5%, and that requirement's 15%. So you'll see in most areas, we're trying to exceed the requirements. As I mentioned, the site sits on 17 acres. There's 28 single-family residential lots, one commercial lot that's designated, that we're asking to be designated with an RE zoning, and then three common lots. The density is 1.65 acres, and, and then, as you can see, we meet or exceed all the open space requirements. Here's some general site plan views, and I will make note the exception on here. If you saw the earlier layout that was in the presentation sooner, you'll see that in the entrance way, this is to the south of the project coming through Bellatera, up Bellstrata way. That island entrance has been removed, and that was a request actually of the Bellatera community. They wanted more of a smoother transition from their community into our community. I pushed back, and as any resident might tell you, because I thought it was a nice addition to the community. But ultimately, we felt that getting rid of that island entrance, if it was going to make the residents of Bellatera happier with the community that we were presenting, we decided to forego that and remove that island entrance. Here's a street level view. You'll see we have detached sidewalks and nice landscaping. Obviously, the landscaping's showing in this picture. It's a little bit more mature than what we would have initially, but we hope it's an accurate representation of what the project will look like in the future. And the paths throughout the community are open to the public. I'll show you another slide in just a second to show you where those are located and how they, how they're laid out throughout the community, but this is one of the images from the interior of the community. It's kind of the walkway in between the two ponds. One also note variation on this is you'll see that this does show a vinyl fence. Once again, the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods requested that we provide rod iron fencing in the community, so we did make that transition, and you'll see in the landscape approval that we have, it does designate rod iron fencing in the community layout. Here's a few pictures of some home styles that we're proposing, of similar home styles that would be built in this community. More of a modern farm-style look. There'll be a mix of single fam, or a single level and two-story homes in this community. Some homes with RV bays and some without. One thing that I wanted to bring to the attention of the commission, as well as any attendees from Callaway Ranch, is one of the staff conditions of development that's recommended on number 3.15 is providing an easement for the Callaway Ranch to have sewer access that would actually run from that blue line through the property on the northwest corner boundary out to Linder Road. Obviously, we do not own the entire property. The Kepler family owns the portion of the property to the north of the blue line as you, as you go out towards Linder Road. But for the portion of the proper, property we do own, the Callaway Ranch subdivision has requested that we provide an easement, and it's actually a condition of approval, or condition of development that the staff has put together, and we are totally fine with that. But I did want to make sure that I noted that because I know that there's some attendees maybe online or in person from Callaway Ranch that this was of significant importance to them. We did say that we would also be willing to work with the Short family, who owns the property to the northwest, as you can see highlighted here with a yellow dot with their, with their last name. And we were also willing to consult with the Kepler family if Callaway Ranch requested us to do so to help them getting that easement granted across Kepler's property down Little Feather Lane. And so I wanted to make sure to note that, yes, we are aware of this condition of development, and we had, we did have a private meeting with the Callaway Ranch HOA and the City of Eagle Sewer Department to discuss this and go over this and, and to discuss our willingness to grant that easement at no cost. Another thing that will be of significant importance for you to be aware of is the residents in Bellatera were concerned about traffic through their community as we were developing our project. So you'll see one of the conditions of development, 3.13 addresses the heavy truck traffic plan. Of course, this is more for heavy truck traffic. It doesn't address all contractors, but we also did meet with the Bellatera HOA and assured them that we were willing to put signage out and, and any other things that they felt necessary to help alleviate construction traffic through their neighborhood as we were developing the site. And then one request that we had that is actually added as a condition of development is the three lots shown in the image. Lots one, two, and 16, that those be single level or single, yeah, single level homes. That there's no two-story homes. One of the gentleman and his, and his wife that live immediately to the south of lots one and two, his, I had met with him in private, and we had talked about ways to try not to block his views of the, the mountains and what he was used to. So we, we felt that we were willing to grant that, and that seemed like a reasonable request, and as well as on lot 16, for the Hallman family, the Short family, trying to be accommodating to them as well, and have us, and having a condition of development to have a single level homes on, on those three lots. The rod iron fencing, as you'll see in, in the landscape plan, I just wanted to highlight that, that we, and where the community fencing is going. And then obviously, as lots are being built out, the builders that are involved in this community, based on the CC and ours and the ACC guidelines, will be required to have rod iron fencing as well. And we also had some questions about where the mailbox locations were going to go, so I wanted to show this image of the proposed cluster mailbox location for the community. And actually, while I'm here, one additional question that we wanted to make sure we addressed tonight was the water usage. So the property does have .57 shares of water rights, which is adequate to provide water for both of these pond amenities that are in the community. And you'll see that in the stain, stormwater drainage protection plan, that those ponds serve as backup water drainage facilities. So again, we're asking for annexation and rezone from RUT, which is an Ada County designation, to RE and R2-DA-P with a, which was residential, two units per acre with a development agreement, conditional use permit, preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat approval for Soaring Feather Ranch. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, thank you. We appreciate your presentation. I just wanted to start off with a couple of questions here. I want to make sure I understand your access to your, your application here. You're, you're fairly landlocked. I don't think that we see too many of them that are this, I don't know, jammed up, to be honest with you. Usually someone's got some sort of access to a highway or a road or something not. I'm assuming west Little Feather Lane is going to be the truck traffic to build this out. Am I correct?
Yeah, we're, we're planning to try to use Little Feather Lane as an access point for some of the truck traffic. We want to be as accommodating as possible. We also know that Mr. Kepler lives to the immediate north of that, so we were going to set time restrictions.
Certainly.
And try to be as accommodating as possible, not to try to disturb his use of his property or the Nuxell family to the south. But yes, we would like to use Little Feather Lane, which is to the northwest corner for, as a primary access point for construction vehicles.
But in the grand scheme of things, you, you even know there's a stub at the end of Sun Valley Place, right in front of the Shorts' property. You can't connect to that because that's going to happen. I can't, I can't imagine. Your only option, even after the truck traffic is done here, is to have the future residents of your community going in and out of Montage Drive, I'm assuming. Is that correct? Venetian onto Montage and through, and through?
Well, future residents will actually primarily access the property through Bellstrata to the south, which is through the Bellatera subdivision. And then to the east side of the project, we have Strand Drive, which is a direct connector through Brush Creek, and it runs straight out to Park, Park, Park Road.
And that's built out right now?
They're building it out right now. Yeah, they were paving the roads actually not too long ago, so the road, the infrastructure's for that community's going in right now.
Do you know that, just curious, do you know the timeline on that?
They've had some delays, so I'm not sure.
Everybody's having delays.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not sure exactly when they expect to be completed. My guess is by the time we have project approval, we'll be catching it when their infrastructure and horizontal improvements are in place, but before, before they're vertical, before homes are being built. So they'll be roadways? Yeah. It's paved now, but, so we'll probably be doing the horizontal work on our project. As homes are going up in that community, we'll be developing the land on this project.
But it's your opinion that the majority of the residents at this community are going to be exiting onto Park Lane rather than Linder at this point?
That's what I believe.
The burden is going to go to Park?
That, yes, because it's the easiest access, and it's a straight drive directly through to Park.
Okay. My last question, and then I'll ask the other commissioners if they have questions. Do you think that at the, I think you said 1.67 dwelling units per acre fits within the area as far as transition between Callaway Ranch, which is three and five acres, and you're, the subdivision to the south of you?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. So Callaway Ranch does have less density than that. To the south of us, it definitely fits because it's the same zoning designation as Bellatera. The lot sizes are very comparable to lot sizes that you see in Bellatera. One thing I would point out is there's actually property to the north of us, the Short family. If you, if you look on the image presented here, where it says Cluster Mailbox Exhibit and says Unplanted, that five acres right there is actually owned by the Short family. And we did offer, we're still, we'll still need to continue the conversation with the Short family to see if they actually want it, but as we dig out these ponds and we have excess dirt, we did offer to build a berm along that northern boundary if they wanted us to. And then to the northwest of our project, we have this riding arena and barn facility. So before you get to Callaway Ranch, you actually have two properties, the Short family, which is not part of our project, and then the barn facility and riding arena, which is 3.07 acres that is part of our project, kind of acting almost as a buffer to the Nuxell family to our west and to Callaway Ranch to our north. And then Brush Creek to our east, those are almost all exactly half-acre lots. They just went with a straight R2 designation. So almost every lot in there is exactly half an acre. And so we have, we, we have a little bit of a transition to our east, but you'll see on, on the map of, you'll see that we have bigger lots mostly on that side, with the exception of the one lot directly to the north of Strand. But the, the two lots directly to the northeast corner, and then the two lots to the southeast corner, you'll see are larger lots in this project, to try to help with the transition into Brush Creek. So we try to be as accommodating as possible to all the surrounding neighbors and trying to be accommodating to that transition from our property to the adjoining properties.
Do you know what the density is going to look like at the, at the buildout of the properties to the east?
In Brush Creek, it's half-acre property. There are, I think they just have a straight R2 designation, so I think they're almost all exactly half-acre lots.
All right. And then my last question, I promise, Commissioners, the proposed berms that you would continue to work with the Short family on, would that be built on their property or on your, your community's property?
Yeah, we, we need to, we're willing to work with the Short family on where that dirt's placed. I think that they wanted to place a at one point, I think we were in agreement that they wanted the dirt, and then they were contemplating, maybe they didn't want to build a berm, so if they want a berm, we're going to be accommodating to them. I want to, I think it's really important, if you're doing a project, that you try to be accommodating to the neighboring properties as much as possible. So if they want that primarily on our property, we're willing to do that. If they want it centered, we're willing to do that as well. If they want it just on their property, we're willing to do that, so.
Understand. Commissioners, other questions for the applicant?
Hi, Mr.?
Commissioner McLaughlin, please.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hudson, I was trying to understand the fencing. So is the rod iron going between the homes too?
Correct.
So you're going to use only rod iron fence, open fencing?
Correct.
Not like your, not like your display with solid?
Yeah, correct. Initially, we had shown a, a demo, a rough out, it's kind of a a rendering of what the community was going to look like. It did have vinyl fencing in it. It was a high-quality vinyl fence, but after meeting with the residents of Bellatera, we learned that that was something that they really appreciated and enjoyed about their neighborhood was the rod iron fencing, and they wanted the transition from their neighborhood to the Soaring Feather community to be seamless as possible, and they felt that fencing consistency was a big deal, so we did revise our fencing plan to have rod iron fencing, not only in the common areas that the developer would be providing, but in the CCNR and ACC guidelines, it will be written in. So it's a requirement for any builder that's building a home to provide the same six-foot rod iron fencing in between the homes and on the back exteriors of the properties as well.
Okay. And do you think this, will this be one builder, or do you see it as, as selling off the lots to multiple builders?
Yeah, great question. And we don't have a final answer on that yet. We've been approached to, upon lot completion, to have several builders that have wanted to potentially purchase all the lots from us. We've also been approached by builder teams that wanted to buy three or four lots each. And the one thing that I, I would hope that any builder would, would understand and appreciate is we would really like a community that doesn't just have two or three floor plans built again and again. We would like a variation in housing style and floor plan options. I just think that's one of the things that makes our community really beautiful, and so that, that is of significant importance to us on who, whichever builders we're working with.
And then one more question. So the existing house is going to access itself from Little Feather. It comes in through the Equestrian Center. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The easement that's currently in place off Little Feather Lane would remain, and that would be a primary access point for the existing residents.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Commissioner McLaughlin?
No, thank you.
Commissioner, may I?
I've got one last question. Can you maybe address the letter from the Department of Environmental Quality in what's looks like a response to Callaway Ranch on the centralized sewer in connection? Is that?
Yeah.
Something you can expand on a little bit with your development, your, your application?
Yes, yes. I appreciate you bringing that up because I want to make sure I'm clear. So, and it's actually a condition of development that's in, in the City of Eagle staff report. So it's my understanding that Callaway Ranch has a community septic system, like a centralized community septic system. They actually have sewer lines that run from each house into this facility. But that facility is failing, and the Callaway Ranch HOA strongly prefers access to city services. At one point in time, they had had to. At one point in time, they had had an engineer look at routing a sewer line directly to the south and connecting to Bellatera, which is actually shown on the, in your screen, the red line. But the way, the gravity flow of that sewer line made that plan non-feasible. They needed to route the sewer line along our northwest boundary out to Linder Road. And they had written a letter to the mayor and City of Eagle requesting our granting an easement through our property to enable that sewer line to run from there. Homeowners sewer system out to Linder Road to a main sewer line there. We met with the Callaway Ranch HOA as well. We met them at the City of Eagle Sewer Department to discuss what that would look like and what they would need. And we were more than willing to grant that easement for them to have access. We did know that, and they're well aware, that the Kepler family owns a significant amount of property that that sewer line would have to run through, and they would have to work with the Kepler family to be granted an easement through their property. And the Short family has a very small portion of property that they would also need an easement from. It sounds like the Callaway Ranch HOA has been in contact with both of those families, the Short family and the Kepler family. And I think they have an action plan to, to come to a resolution to actually be granted the easement needed to route the sewer line from their community out to Linder Road so they can hook into city services. When we met with them, I told them that for us, you know, maybe a lot of other developers would ask them for, you know, financial compensation to do this, but it's really important that they know who we are as a development team and how we want to do things. And that I didn't, I felt like being accommodating to them and not asking for monetary compensation was important to me because I understand that having a development directly to your south already is somewhat chaotic. And I want all the neighboring communities to know that, yes, I am very aware of the chaos that development brings, but I also want to do something that provides, you know, great value to the City of Eagle and hopefully have a project that all the neighbors feel proud of and, and knew that the people behind it were trying to be as thoughtful and accommodating as possible. So we met with them, and we told them that we were more than willing to work with them and grant that easement across our property on the northwest boundary so they could route the sewer line out to, to Linder Road.
Do you feel if the Callaway homeowners, Callaway subdivision homeowners association is unable to secure the easements from the Shorts and the Kepler families, that that will impede your project going forward if it's a condition of approval?
It's a condition for us to grant the easement, but that, that's the condition in the staff report. Let me see, I, I probably should have put the actual, put that on the screen. It's 3.15, but...
I'm sure that Mr. Williams would be able to elaborate a little bit on the city's behalf of that condition too.
Yeah, so we have to grant the easement, and it has to be in writing and, and be in place prior to this plat recording. And I did say that I, I can't guarantee that the, the Kepler family or the Short family would grant it, but I'm more than willing to go and meet with them, with the Callaway Ranch HOA. I know that that's of significant importance to the residents in that community. I, I, I feel for them because I can imagine, you know, having a, a failing community sewer system is not a fun thing that be dealing with. And it sounds like it's been a longstanding issue for them that they really want to get resolved. And before that window closes of it being resolved, you know, once we have this community developed, if we didn't grant the easement, it might prohibit it, you know, prolong it into the very extended future. So we want to be good neighbors. I, I'm willing to do as much as I can. It looks like our project could proceed as long as we grant the easement. I would feel horrible if we were able to do that, but they weren't able to actually get the sewer access that they needed for their community. So like I said, I'm willing to meet with the Short family and Steve and his wife. I don't know the Kepler family, but I'm more than willing to meet with them as well if, if the, if the Callaway Ranch HOA would like me to.
Sure. Well, that make, that sounds fair, and it sounds like everybody's got their prescribed responsibilities here. And if it works, fantastic. If it doesn't, then it's not holding up your project if they were to continue. Commissioner Gerber?
A follow-up question. Where is your septic system going to make a connection, or your sewer system going to make a connection?
It's going to stub to the south. Bellatera actually, the sewer stubs to the, to the north of their community and to the south of our community, so let me...
Is it where, you're going to connect in where the bottom of that?
That's correct, yeah.
Red line is?
Yeah, down, down through Bell Strata Way here showing to the south, almost straight in the middle of our project, through there.
And if, if the right of way that's basically the, the blue line can't take place, is there still an option of being able to work with you on doing the run, running the red line through your property or?
Well, they met, they hadn't, they hired an engineer and met with the City of Eagle, and they were told that that, that they couldn't do that option because of the gravity flow of the sewer line. So it, it appeared based on the letter that they wrote to the City of Eagle, the mayor, and then in our meetings that we had with the Eagle Sewer Department and the Callaway Ranch HOA, that that wasn't a feasible option. I understand it. If for some reason, you know, the Kepler family weren't, wasn't willing to grant sewer access, we're not opposed to trying to find a way to potentially, you know, work with the Callaway Ranch subdivision. But based on what they had communicated, the best path for their sewer access was to route directly out to Linder Road.
So, so in this case, Callaway Ranch sewage doesn't run downhill. It runs...
Wow.
Yeah.
You were chewing on that one for a while, weren't you?
I didn't say the, I said sewage, didn't I?
Did you have a follow-up, Commissioner Gerber?
No, don't thank you. They better not.
Any further questions for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you, Mr. Hudson. We'll, we'll have you up again at the end.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission, Mike Williams, planning staff for the record. As you're probably very aware, if you look at who signed this staff report, it wasn't me. Morgan's out ill tonight. She asked that I would cover for her, but Morgan did email me this morning and asked me to send her staff report, and she did prepare the PowerPoint presentation. So I'll walk you through Morgan's PowerPoint presentation. And then I'm going to address a few things aside from that and a couple corrections that need to be made within the staff report, as well as probably moving a condition of development from being a condition of development to being a site-specific conditions instead. And I'll explain why we're going to do that or why staff will recommend you do that when we get to that point. So before you tonight, you have a request for an annexation rezone conditional use permit, preliminary development plan and preliminary plat. I'm not going to go into all the numbers. You covered the numbers in the introduction. It's for a 32-lot subdivision, 29 of which, and Mr. Hobson called it a commercial lot. You can somewhat call it a commercial lot, but it's a residential estate lot. And within the residential estate zoning designation, it allows for stable facilities as a conditional use permit. With that being said, that we're going to use this development agreement in lieu of that conditional use permit to allow for that current use that occurs on the site to continue. There are also three common lots within this subdivision. Quick vicinity map, it's located right here. Brush Creek's right here. Mr. Chairman, I'll talk a little bit about Brush Creek as well. You've looked at the plat several times. Mr. Hobson did a great job of bringing that back, back up several times for you. Everything around this, with the exception to the north, is pretty much right around two units per acre. And also immediately to the west, there are some five-acre lots that are located between this proposal as well as, excuse me, this proposal and Linder Road. With that being said, a majority of that, that three-acre lot sits right next to that, and that three-acre lot has had a stable facility out there for years. So nothing's really changing much at that location. The Conferency Plan designates this area as neighborhood residential, which allows for two to four dwelling units per acre. However, within the text of the Conferency Plan, it caps them at no more than two dwelling units per acre. The proposal's coming in at 1.65 dwelling units per acre, so it's in conformance with the Conferency Plan. It's also, you notice the little dots, it's not the measles. That indicates it's a transitional area, so they have to do lot transitioning which, within this area. That's what's recommended by the Conferency Plan. So we're going to touch on really quick the site data for the R2 zone, and I want you to go down to where it says percent of site is common area open space. And you're going to find this on page nine of 22 in the staff report. And right here, they're providing 27.5% open space. Well, that exceeds 20%, but what was it calculated is when Morgan made the determination that they provided the off, the correct amount of offsetting increase of open space, she did not change that percentage where it says required 20%. That should be required 27.2%. So if you do choose to send this on with a recommendation approval, staff would make that request for that change. The zoning compatibility, it's in conformance with the zoning compatibility for this area and for the Conferency Plan designation. We covered the 1.65 dwelling units per acre, and then there's a three-acre equestrian site located on this northwest corner. And I'm going to touch on it again. Mr. Hobson also touched on it. Chairman Wright, when you touched on the Callaway Ranch, Callaway Ranch actually is adjacent to this northern border up here. This portion here is the Short property. It's not part of this. If the Shorts were to come in in a future date, and if they wanted to redevelop their property, they could actually come in and make the same request as what's being made here, then it would be up to them to figure out the transition to Callaway Ranch. It should be noted, if I remember correctly, Callaway Ranch is not five-acre lots. I believe it's two-acre lots. So they're at one unit per two acres. The, if you, if you were to remove the RE zoning designation and that three-acre site from this, the density of just the single-family residential lots along with those common areas would be right around 2.01 dwelling units per acre. So one one-hundredth over the two dwelling units per acre. Now, they do have a couple requests. On lot number 15, the existing residence is only seven feet off the southern property line. They're asking for a waiver of the 10-foot setback for that lot only. That is reflected in condition of development number 3.16. And we'll touch on that again in a minute. And also a reduction of the pond width easement. Whenever they use, whenever you use a pond in the City of Eagle for pressurized irrigation, pursuant to our pressurized irrigation standards, it requires a 30-foot easement. It is not uncommon, it's very rarely that we actually end up requiring that 30-foot easement. But as long as there's sufficient easement for access to the pond, this pond is actually fronted by a road and a common lot, so there's plenty of access area to get to the pond for maintenance in the future. So staff is supportive of that 10, 10-foot eas, that, excuse me, that easement being reduced to 10 feet. The parcel being retained for the existing commercial writing stables is 133,000 and some change. That's right around three acres. And that facility's been there since 2000. I will also share with you, Chairman Wright, when talking about, and you, you discussed it in detail, the commission and sewer, that system at Callaway Ranch was constructed with Callaway Ranch when I was the zoning administrator for Gem County. That was right around 2000, 2001. And hence the reason they're probably looking for sewer. It's old and probably needs to be replaced, and they're finding that it's starting to fail, and that's why they're trying to find a connection to a central sewer system. The whole subdivision is basically piped for a central sewer system. It's just where you send the flow, and that, that's what everybody's working on. The applicant is agreeable to showing that easement, and I, I'll have one correction on there. And Mr. Hobson, during your rebuttal, please get up if I'm wrong. He referred to Eagle, City of Eagle telling him no on the sewer connection. It wasn't City of Eagle, it's not City of Eagle sewers, Eagle Sewer District sewer. City of Eagle does not control the sewer, so I believe they were working with the sewer district. And it's not that I haven't been here for a couple days. However, Callaway Ranch has been looking for a pathway to get a sewer, their sewer connected to central sewer for a number of years. And that, as I remember, has been a problem that the fall, back to you, Commissioner Gerber, they do not have enough fall to run a sewer system to the south. That's why they're trying to get out to Linder Road. That easement and that property is not controlled by this applicant. It's absolutely controlled by the Shorts and Kepler. It'll have to go, this applicant will have to provide an easement across the northern portion of their site, which they're being required to do as part of this recommendation. But they don't have control from where the sewer's going to come, from Callaway through the Short property, nor do they have any control other than, they have access for their horse facility, and that's the only thing they have. So they do not have the ability to dictate dedicating easement for that sewer line. So the Callaway Ranch folks will need to work closely with the Keplers and the Shorts. Sample renderings, Mr. Hobson provided those to you. So let's touch on really quick, I, I want to cover some of your questions that you asked. Chairman Wright, you were asking in regard to how does this fit in with what's around it? And I also want to address Brush Creek. So what's around it, and with the exception of Brush, Brush Creek, I have written every one of these applications. So Lane Wood was, came in at 1.97 dwelling units per acre. Lane Wood Two came in at 1.99 dwelling units per acre. Bellatera was at 1.93 dwelling units per acre. Brush Creek is the one I didn't write up, is right around 1.7 dwelling units per acre. And Farmstead, which you recently recommended approval, is at 1.74 dwelling units per acre. So Soaring Eagle coming in at 1.65 dwelling units per acre is comparable to everything around it, with the exception of the one large tract to the north owned by the Shorts and a few lots to the west. So it does fit in with that general area. Brush Creek, as Mr. Hobson touched on, is currently under construction. And I will tell you, when these guys are under construction and they get paved, they cannot wait once that pavement has been accepted and everything by ACHD to get building permits in here. So I would fully anticipate before, if this were to go to the council, get a recommendation, excuse me, if the council were to approve this application, they'd have to do a design review application. That's another month and a half. Then they'd have to submit a final plat application, which probably, I'll give it two months, and that's on a good day. By the time they get to final plat approval and start construction, Brush Creek should be online. I would anticipate Brush Creek will be online probably right around mid-July, first of August at the latest. Let's go to page five of the staff report. Sites, excuse me, condition of development 3.16. That's your setbacks. Typically, on a condition, excuse me, on a planned unit development, your setbacks are part of the site-specific conditions of approval because it's tied to the conditional use permit. So what staff is requesting, that we strike 3.16 and move it to site-specific, number 20. So it's, so it's under the proper set of conditions. And then also, Mr. Hobson brought up single, single-story homes. That was not, I do not believe that was referenced in any part of this report. So staff would request as part of site, site-specific condition number 20, that you add language after the maximum lot coverage. This states lots... This states lots, excuse me, lots 16, block one, and lots one and two, block three, shall be a maximum of single-story, not to exceed 25 feet in height. And you're looking at me going, well, 25 feet, Mike? That's pretty tall. But what that does is, if you do a 10-foot ceiling and do a 612 pitch roof, you, you might get some height. That, I'm not saying that's what they're going to do, but we've ran into it to the point to where if they do any steep pitched roofs, for a classier style-looking home, then you run into having to deal with that later. Because if we start looking at 20s or 22s, they start getting to the point where it's hard to design the home to make it work on that single story. And with that, I think I addressed all your questions, and staff would stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. One question for me, and I hope it doesn't seem an obvious answer here, but is Callaway Ranch annexed into the city?
Mr. Chairman, no, sir.
I didn't think they were. Does this provide them the last piece of contiguous property if they wanted to annex into the future? The last, the missing piece?
Mr. Chairman, if Callaway Ranch had to desire the entire subdivision to annex into the City of Eagle, this would make them contiguous.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McLaughlin, thank you.
So, Mike, you want to, you don't want to add a separate condition number 21 to make the single-story homes? You want it all in site-specific condition 20, correct?
Chairman Wright and Commissioner McLaughlin, absolutely. And the reason for that is, is we usually, once we have an approval, then we send it over to a building department, and we tie all the setbacks, anything to do with that subdivision in regard to setbacks, maximum lot coverages, any reductions of setbacks, and any restrictions on height, we want that all together.
And, and one other quick note, on page six, I think site-specific conditions six and eight are duplicates.
Good eye. You can strike one of those. Any follow-up, Commissioner McLaughlin?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Williams, I did have one last comment that I'd like to get your opinion on. The, the comment was made about dirt from the, that's going to be removed for, for water, being placed at a future boundary. We just came off of a fairly long hearing a couple weeks ago, where putting a berm in ahead of time would have saved us many hours of hearing that debate in here. But it seems that we're leaving the discussion fairly open to people being good neighbors. Should we, as a commission, consider doing more within the application here on that process, or just leave it alone?
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you my phone's going to blow up here in a second. Because I know that there's people, staff, that are watching this meeting as we conducted. Here's my thoughts. And I know which subdivision, it just gives me goosebumps thinking about this.
That was a long night.
Oh, yeah. I, I know which subdivision you're referring to, and I know that the, if I remember right, the residents of the adjacent subdivision wanted a berm. And then there was discussion of placing many trees in the backyard of those to provide somewhat of a buffer. I, kudos to Mr. Hobson for putting an offer out there to construct a berm and doing it on his property. It's not a required buffer area. It would not be reviewed with design review. I mean, the best-case scenario is if it was located within a common lot, then we could make it part of a design review application, would allow the city to, police that are regulated, for lack of better words, or review it to how it's planted. My concern as a planner is when you start running a berm in between two subdivisions like that, is drainage. And if, if you have, if you have landscaping on that, I mean, drip lines aren't bad with trees, but if you have any kind of turf on there or anything, you're going to have drainage into the backyards of the subdivision and the backyard of that adjacent property owner. And I, you know, he might have horse, horse pasture out there and would probably love having that drainage, because that, then it saves them having to keep his pasture irrigated. But it does have its tendencies to be flawed. If they can address drainage and address how they're going to landscape it, because it's not something that's going to be reviewed by design review, and then even if you required that berm to the point to where it is reviewed by design review and it goes through that kind of approval, how do we ever police that when it's in the, somebody else's backyard? I mean, there's no, there's no easements associated with it. Anybody, because it's on their private property, can go in there and make whatever modifications they can to it. And then what happens if you have, since it's not on a common lot, what happens if you have one or two neighbors that do a great job maintaining the berm and a couple neighbors that don't do such a great job maintaining the berm? So I just want you to keep, take that into consideration.
That's a lot to think about. Okay. I think I, I think I hear you. Any follow-up, commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right, I've got two individuals who've signed in to testify on this particular application. And so we'll start off with Jerry Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs? Welcome to the commission, sir. If you give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jerry Gibbs. I live at 1834 North Monterosa Way in the Bellaterra Development. Commissioner Wright and zoning commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Bellaterra is a wonderful community. We've got development pending north of us, south of us, and west of us. And that's created a lot of anxiety with, amongst the residents in Bellaterra who like our peaceful lifestyle there. Change is the only thing constant in development is inevitable. We realize that. The, one of the major concerns that with Soaring Feather was that it was going to have direct access from Linder through the Belastrada Road into Soaring Feather. So it needs to say, our residents had a lot of concerns with that increase of traffic through the Bellaterra Development. Appreciate Bailey Engineering and the, the folks at Capital 11 for holding their meeting at Eagle High School. We had over 50 people from Bellaterra there to raise all of our concerns. They listened, they talked to everyone. There was no tar and feathers or pitchforks. So there, it was, you know, it takes two to tango. Following that, we had a meeting with the residents of Bellaterra to take what was learned and discussed at that meeting and dits it down to a manageable list that we could work with, with the developer. We met with the developer a day or so after that and discussed our list. And I'll have to say that they've done about everything possible that we've asked them to do to limit the direct impact to Bellaterra from traffic. And they listened, like I say, to our concerns. And I talked to some folks over at Eagle Mountain and Lilac Springs, there's a big development going on behind them, and you have to drive through their development to get into there. So I know that the precedent's been set for these landlocked type of developments. You know, you hate that. But those folks over there are pretty grumpy. And they didn't, they let me know that they were not happy with everything. I think we've, by working with the developer and Bailey Engineering, we've come up to a compromise. They, they've listened, and we'll go from there and work with them as development proceeds. And so far, they've done nothing to cause us to distrust them. So we're, it's going to be a nice development. I think in respect to fences and things like that, landscaping, walkways, it's going to be a contribution to that area and probably not have as much impact to our property values as what we had feared. So they're trying, they're doing, they're doing the right thing by working with us. We really, really, really appreciate it. And so, and we're looking forward to being neighbors with those folks in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you.
Thank you again.
For your time tonight. Next, we have Jody Riley. Ms. Riley? Same drill, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jody Riley. I live in Bellaterra at 4455 West Modena Drive.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you so much for allowing testimony this evening. I would like to extend thanks to Sheridan and his team, as far as them as developers, for working with Mr. Gibbs, who is our HOA president, and especially in the last couple of weeks, to work out some of the concerns that Bellaterra homeowners have had about Soaring Feather. I would say at this point, when it comes to Sheridan and his team at the development partners, I believe there are actually two developers now who are working together on Soaring Feather, I, as a Bellaterra homeowner, am really pleased with the progress that we have made, and I thank Sheridan for that. I still have a lot of concerns about the actions of Bailey Engineering, which is not only the engineering company for Soaring Feather, they are also the engineering company for the new Farmstead Landing subdivision to our south, as well as the proposed Kingswood subdivision to our west across Linder. I'm not certain if they also represent Brush Creek. The concern I mostly have about them is the ongoing statement that the access road, the private road Little Feather Way cannot possibly be changed to a public road to allow direct access to the new subdivision, which, as you pointed out, Chairman Wright, is very landlocked. The reason, rationale we've been given several times is that the current easement is a legacy commercial easement to allow access to the riding stable operation, which has been in existence since the year 2000, and that because of that, that easement cannot possibly be changed to accommodate the entrance to Soaring Feather from Linder. However, tonight, I was very surprised to come in and find out that we can't possibly access this new neighborhood directly from Linder instead of through Bellaterra or through now Brush Creek. But now we can have a sewer easement across Little Feather Lane or Little Feather Way to allow to connect to Callaway Ranch. Tonight was the first I've heard of that. Another related fact to that is because Soaring Feather is only 32 buildable lots, a traffic study is not required by ACHD. When I've spoken to Ms. Miller in the past about this, she says that the requirement for a traffic study is 100 homes, and that, with other questions, she says, well, this is the way ACHD usually wants things. To me, it usually is very ambiguous, and as the developer's engineering representative, I would have hoped that she could have answered the questions I had and the other residents posed to her with more certainty. Furthermore, if you look at Brush Creek, together with Soaring Feather and now Kingswood across Linder, all three of those subdivisions do not meet the criteria of 100 homes for a traffic study. The only development that met the threshold for their criteria is the Farmstead Landing subdivision to the south of Bellaterra, between, north of Floating Feather and between Linder and Park. But if you add up the homes in those four proposed developments, Brush Creek, Soaring Feather, Kingswood, and Farmstead Landing, I don't have the exact number home, of homes in Brush Creek, but it's either equal to, and I believe larger than, the 32 homes in Soaring Feather. So if you add all the homes up from those four developments, that's 272 new buildable lots coming on in that area. It's, it's, it's a quarter mile or less in that area, north of Bellaterra and the Silver Creek subdivision, then west across Linder, and then south of Bellaterra in Lac Le Monde. 272 lots. And Linder and Park Lane and Floating Feather are still two-lane roads. It's my understanding that the county has not funded any of the proposed improvements along Linder, north of Highway 44 at this time. It would be my hope that the commission would explore contacting ACHD representatives if you indeed have those kind of contacts, and to talk about perhaps having a special traffic study due to the number of homes coming online, although three of those developments don't meet that 100-home threshold, or if the City of Eagle has its own traffic engineering department, I would request that the commission ask the traffic engineering department of the City of Eagle to look into this. 272 homes, all coming online within six to 18 months of one another in that small area, is going to bring so much traffic in. I'm very concerned about that. Finally, I would like to express my continued unhappiness with the Hallmans, who are the previous owners of the plot that is going to be Soaring Feathers. It's my understanding that they've recently closed on that property and sold it to Sheridan and his team. They are going to retain their estate, I guess you would call it, with their home and then their barn and continue, they want to continue to have their commercial riding operation through there. And yet, they are, they are against having the easement, or honestly, with 272 homes, I would hope that ACHD would consider looking at eminent domain. But, you know, they don't want traffic coming through to the property, which they just sold to these developers for a very high amount of money. It further concerns me that the Hallmans currently have a private gated entrance from the north side of their property into Callaway Ranch, and as part of the development, Sheridan and his team have agreed to provide them with a southern private lane, which will be gated into the northwest corner of Soaring Feather Ranch. Very, very concerned and disappointed about the actions of the Hallmans, and I wanted to get that on the record. But my primary concern right now, again, Sheridan and his team, especially in the last month, they have been wonderful, very happy with them. Very concerned that a traffic study is not required from ACHD due to the size of these neighborhoods, and disappointed with Bailey Engineering's airing of our concerns about that.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. We appreciate your concerns. Commissioners, do you have questions for Ms. Riley at this time? Commissioner McLaughlin?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. Ms. Riley, you know, you can attend ACHD commission meetings also and voice your concerns. They have public comment times, and I would suggest that that might be an option for you to go down there. I think they're on Wednesdays, but I'm not positive. And, and, you know, I think you have a valid point about the 272 new houses. So that's just a suggestion, because that isn't something we can really address here.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. Related to what you said in the most recent mailing that was sent out by Bailey Engineering, I believe it had to be with Kingswood subdivision, at the very bottom of the page, very prominently typed, was a note from Bailey Engineering saying, if you have any concerns about the roads, you need to talk to ACHD. And ACHD may, this was the wording in the letter, ACHD may have a hearing. It was very adversarial on the part of Bailey Engineering. So as far as I know, ACHD does not have any hearings scheduled, and so that's why I've come initially this evening to appeal to you, to see if, you know, we can get the right attention to this traffic issue.
I think they just do the staff reviews. They're, I don't know if they have actual hearings, but I meant your cumulative concerns about the traffic is something that you could speak to them about.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Gerber?
Actually, they're correct, probably saying they may have those hearings, and that means that they can decide if they want to or not. And they're more likely to have them if there are requests that come in from a subdivision or something like that. Secondly, my understanding is that the study's undergoing right now to actually widen and take care of Linder all the way to Beacon Light from 55, or 44.
44.
So there are some things in the work there. It's not being ignored or something like that. But you could check with ACHD on that, too.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Gerber. ACHD does have, they've already performed those studies, it's in some of their plans, but the funding is, no funding is assigned. So, you know, if you consider the lead time for ACHD to prioritize funding, especially with the Highway 16 extension going down to I-84 being a priority right now for them, I don't think that we can expect that there would be any relief on Linder Road in the next, you know, by the time these homes all come online.
Actually, Highway 16 extension is all state funds, not ACHD.
Exactly. And then you've got the funding issue.
You might keep an eye on them, because I know the federal money's starting to come in from the Transportation Act that was passed, too. So we are, I know that the city and the city council certainly have been encouraging some kind of action on that ASAP.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Chairman.
We appreciate your time. Are there others in the audience that would like to testify at this time? Yes, sir. Welcome back.
Tom Ringel, 2475 Northland Valley Place, and as a Callaway Ranch resident and member of the HOA, I just want to say that I appreciate all the support that the developer and the city staff are giving to us in trying to get our sewer system issues resolved. Not everything that was said tonight is consistent with what I understand is going on, but the major pieces of it are right, so that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Is there anybody else who would like to testify at this time? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Hudson, the floor is yours for rebuttal or closing comments.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners and staff. I do want to say just a couple of quick closing comments, and then I'll end the commentary. First, I do appreciate you guys providing this public forum for myself and for all residents to have a voice and be able to bring those concerns to your attention. I do feel for the residents of Belatera and Callaway Ranch and the surrounding neighborhoods, because there has been a tremendous amount of growth in that area of Eagle in particular, and some more future projects, including Soaring Feather Ranch. There are some things that are outside of my control. ACHD is one of those. I do know that we have to pay traffic impact fees upon approval before any building permits would be issued. Whether or not those are high enough, that's debatable, you know? I think there's a lot of people feel maybe they should, developers and builders should be contributing even more to provide funding for all the other areas and infrastructure needed with all the growth, and I certainly understand that. There are a lot of projects coming online, smaller projects in this area. I'm not part of ACHD, but I do know that we did have to get a letter of recommendation or conditions of approval from ACHD, which is actually in the packet that you have from staff tonight, outlining the conditions that we have to meet to have approval for our project. I do feel for the residents of Belatera, because that is a lot of growth coming online, and I can imagine it's, you know, probably going to change traffic in the immediate vicinity of where they live, so. Mike, or Mr. Williams, I do appreciate you bringing that up. It was the Eagle Sewer District. I kept referring to the City of Eagle Sewer, but you were correct. Eagle Sewer District that we did meet with to discuss the sewer easement. I guess I'll end with, obviously, I know that probably having to review all these projects and see all the growth is something that you're trying to balance and be as accommodating and reasonable as possible to developers such as myself and the current residents of Eagle. I hope you can see the effort I've put forth in meeting with all the parties involved to try to bring a project that was accommodating as much as I possibly can be to the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods. I want to do right by everybody. I know that development is chaotic and, you know, not the most enjoyable thing to live directly next to, but I do know that when we complete this project, the community will have another great addition to the City of Eagle, and I hope the residents, the future residents of the project and the surrounding neighbors also greatly appreciate the work that's been accomplished in Soaring Feather Ranch. I really appreciate the time to speak in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. We appreciate you being here. Commissioners, last-minute questions for the applicant before we close out the public Mr. Williams, welcome back, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to provide a couple of clarifications for the record.
What are we clarifying?
First of all, the City of Eagle does not have a traffic engineer. All the traffic there, all the roads are controlled by Ada County Highway District, and Ms. Riley is right. Until you get to 100 lots, ACHD typically does not require a traffic impact study. With that being said, it was indicated that there was 272 lots coming on without a study. Farmstead, when it came through, had a full traffic impact study that was reviewed and approved by Ada County Highway District, so their traffic was addressed. The only lots that are coming on now is the 17 with Brush Creek and the 32 or whatever with Soaring Feather. It should also be noted, I wrote this one in 2005, Belatera did not have a traffic study. I do want to show you on Google Earth to address the dedication of right-of-way. This is where the current horse-stable facility is located. This is the property that is being developed or proposed to be developed. And notice where it says, "West Little Feather Lane." Do you notice the property that that is on? It's on the property of 2888 North Linder Road, which is owned by the Kepler's. There, without the Kepler's, if the Kepler's wanted to dedicate right-of-way, they'd probably have to either plant it off or do a perpetual easement, and right now, the easement that is more than likely described on their deed is for this property only, for access to that horse facility. So the developer, neither the developer nor the current owner, has the ability to dedicate a right-of-way across somebody else's property. I like the comment about eminent domain, though, and I'd love to see where ACHD, because I have to agree with her, that it would be absolutely nice if they could get a right-of-way to Linder Road, to have this traffic come out on Linder, so it's not having to come through either Belatera or Brush Creek to the east over to North Park. That way, you could get it straight out to Linder, but with that being said, the owners of this property want to maintain their horse facility, and it'd be difficult at best to pull a right-of-way up through there and run the right-of-way out to Linder Road. With that, staff would stand for any questions.
Mr. Williams, but it is contemplated that West Strand Drive to the west will be stubbed out in the event that, that, whatever, that last empty parcel there someday potentially gets developed?
Yes, sir, but that doesn't mean it's going to have access to Linder. West Strand may just go in there and do a cul-de-sac, because depending on, well, let's see if they pull up.
That's not something the city would require on an application, that it has to go through?
To connect to Linder?
Yes.
We're at the mercy of ACHD, sir. And, yeah, so you have to look at where your spacing is to intersections, either existing intersections or proposed intersections. If it was in this general location, there might be a remote possibility, but if you remember right on Farmstead, when Farmstead was originally approved, in fact, I think by the time I made it to you, this one had been removed, there was access to Linder through Farmstead, and because there's a roundabout proposed at Floating Feather and Linder, because of spacing requirements, they couldn't have that access.
Thank you for the refresher, and that's helpful. Mr. Hudson, to be fair, would you, is there any further comments you'd like to make after hearing Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, so at this time, we will close the public hearing on Item 5A and go into discussion amongst ourselves. Commissioners, who would like to get us started this evening? Commissioner McCauley?
I'd be prepared to make a recommendation.
A motion is always in order, Commissioner.
Okay. I would move that we recommend for approval A1121-RZ1721-CU1121/PPUD0821-PP1821, annexation, rezone, conditional use permit, preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat for Soaring Feather Ranch, subject to staff recommendation for annex and rezone, and staff recommendation for the conditional use permit, preliminary development plat and preliminary plat, with the following additions, that we add a site-specific condition number 20, which is Lot 16 Block 1 and Lot 1 and 2 of Block 3 to be single stories, not to exceed 25 feet. That will replace these, staff recommendation for annex and rezone, 3.16, which will be removed. We also would add to that verbiage, well, we would, we would put, excuse me, I did that backwards, actually, 3.16 would be removed and be replaced as number 20 on the staff recommendations for conditional use permit, preliminary development, and preliminary plat, and the verbiage I just read about Lot 16 and 1 would be added to that. Also, that we strike the site-specific condition number 8, because it's a repeat to number 6.
Commissioner McCauley, before I ask for a second, did you have any further recommendations in your motion regarding the 27.2% language on nine of, page 9 of 22?
Thank you, yes. I would recommend that we would add verbiage as recommended, I don't have that right here, but as recommended by staff. Actually, that's going to be page 9 of 22 in the grid to be 27.2% instead of 20%.
Thank you, Commissioner McCauley. Commissioners, we do have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerber. Commissioners, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I'll go ahead and add a few, two comments here. I think this is a good application. I think most of my comments were made earlier, but I just, again, seeing such a landlocked opportunity for development poses so many challenges, and I'm assuming quite a bit of risks. It sounds a lot of those risks are being mitigated by the owners of the development here, and, Mr. Hudson, I appreciate your steady hand on this and your team. It sounds, from the few that we heard from the public here, that your actions are bearing fruit here, and that's not always the case. We certainly don't hear very many times that people take out the time to get that many people in a room at a high school and talk to them and work with them, or if we do, it's very often one-sided, or there's not a lot of follow-up. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, one, thank you for choosing to do your business in Eagle, and, two, for being so open and communicative with the future neighbors and residents that surround this application. I'm glad that they're keeping the horse barn and that operation in play. I think that's an integral part of the community that so many folks enjoy and get a lot of value out of it, and I'm very grateful about that. And it seems like just the subtle items of limiting those three particular homes within the lots and blocks to single-family, single-story, excuse me, not single-family, but limiting them to 25 feet, so many times, just simple considerations like that are not taken seriously enough to win over your future neighbors. So again, I, it's not, it's not going to be hard for me to get behind the motion that was made by Commissioner McCauley, and just wanted to add my two cents to that. I do hope, in the long term, that the Homeowners Association from Callaway Ranch is able to work with those individuals that have their private property rights at stake with granting easements. It sounds like the sewer line is something that definitely needs to happen, and, again, just, you know, for the record here, I hope that's something that's able to work out on. And last but not least, traffic is always central on the minds of the commissioners here. I think Mr. Williams did a very precise job in showing the public here how, I don't want to say our hands are tied, they're not even tied, we're not even in the ballgame. It's not a discussion that we get to have, and it's unfair, but it's fair, and it's disappointing, but there's also nothing, I don't want to say there's nothing we can do about it, but we share your frustration, too. You know, I wish, I wish there was something that we can do, but we weren't appointed commissioners to do hopes and wishes here. We're expected to look at little boxes of things within the comprehensive plan and within these site-specific conditions of approval, and I think this application checks all those boxes. So, Commissioners, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to agree with what you said. It's very nice to see an applicant that goes the extra mile to work with neighbors and try to accommodate them, so it makes our job easier here. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. Any other comments? Commissioners, we do have a motion and a second before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye as well, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we do have some more business before us this evening. We have Item 5B. It's also an action item, A-13-21/RZ-19-21/CU-10-21/PPUD-09-21/PP-20-21, annexation and rezone with a development agreement, conditional use permit, preliminary development plan, and preliminary plat for Kingswood subdivision, LPGD Utah Limited Liability Company. And again, it says representative by Jim Perry, but you don't look like a Jim.
No, it's Katie Miller.
Ms. Miller, welcome to commission, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Katie Miller for the record, 1119 East State Street, Eagle, Idaho, 83616. How do I, my, this is not the same as mine.
Do you need a bit of a hand?
The application before you tonight is for Kingswood subdivision. As you just read off, it is for annexation and rezone from RUT to R2 with the PUD and a CU and preliminary plat approval. The site is 38 acres. It is located on Linder Road, directly across the street from Belatera. It's south of Beacon Light and north of Floating Feather. Surrounding our neighborhood is Lane Wood subdivision, which is also an R2. Application details. This subdivision has 74 buildable lots, 13 common lots. As you can see, amenities include a lot of pathways throughout, a large pond space, a pickleball court, which I know you guys are getting used to seeing those now, pickleball courts, pathways, benches, and gazebos, and then ample landscape throughout. I wanted to bring this up. This is the pathway plan that was agreed upon between yourselves, or the Parks and Pathways Commission and the applicant. Easier to see, if you look on the north side of the drainage ditch that runs through the site, we've got the green area that indicates all eight-foot pathways, I feel, oh, sorry, didn't mean to do that one, eight-foot pathways. So you've got stuff coming from the north, coming down all along the north side of the drain. You have pathways that will eventually lead you out to the east to Linder Road, which is an eight-foot sidewalk all the way down Linder Road. If you follow that down, the green, the B section, is an eight-foot pathway that comes through there. You can connect to a five-foot detached sidewalk, and then meander up through the middle portion of the site, and we also have an eight-foot pathway around the pond area. You will see the yellow, or maybe it's orange, the orange pathway on the south side of the ditch. That is a 10-foot natural surface pathway that will run through the site, eventually connect, if the Lane Wood folks can get that organized, continue that through their development and continue it on to the west. They were very excited about that. They were very excited about that. Drainage District Two, which owns that easement, has granted us permission to put that pathway within their easement. So that will be there, and it will be maintained by the Parks Department. The comprehensive plan for this area is neighborhood residential, as Mike mentioned in the last application, is, is true with this one. It's two to four dwelling units per acre. We are coming in with 1.93 dwelling units per acre here. All single-family residential units. Open space accounts for 35.4%. And we're required 30% of the site, so we exceed that. This will be developed in two phases. Phase one will be 36 buildable lots, and phase two will be 38. So phase one will basically be the frontage on Linder Road, south, the south, and part of the west border. And then the large pond and central amenities will be included with that phase one plan. And then phase two will be the remainder and move north of that drain. I wanted to show you a picture of this preliminary platte, only because it really represents the transition with our neighboring communities, which is Lane Wood all around us. If you can see the small dash lines on the outside, we've matched lots one for one to make sure that we're not overdense in those areas, we're respecting their lot sizes. That was something that was brought up at a neighborhood meeting, so we were sure to, excuse me, sure to address that, and they were very happy with it. Minimum lot size in this development is 10,000 square feet. That's why we're looking for the R2 with the PUD and development agreement. Maximum lot size is 23,000 square feet with an average of 12,630 square feet throughout the development. What I'm going to call Lane Wood North is basically their phases six through eight, which is truly on our north side of the property. They were 1.97 dwelling units per acre with 25% open space. Lane Wood to the south and to the west was approved with 1.99 dwelling units per acre. And then Bellaterra to our east, which is 1.96 dwelling units per acre. So we are very, very consistent with what has been approved and developed all the way around us. We have three access points to the site. One going north into an existing phase of Lane Wood Eight, which the platte has been recorded. One going south, which is Lane Wood Four, also recorded and built out. And then one going out to Linder Road. Utilities are Eagle Sewer District, which is, we will tie into a manhole in Linder Road. Eagle City Water is our water source, which is going to come from the north. And then our irrigation district is New Drake Creek. Here are some sample elevations of the homes. These were also included in your packet. So different frontages, facades, elevations, garage types. And both single-story and two-story homes. We did have a neighborhood meeting on May 17th. Some of the concerns were the pathway along Drainage District Two. Initially, when we had the meeting, we didn't have the pathway continuing all the way to our west property boundary, so it was a request that was made by the Lane Wood residents that it be continued for their use and their future extension, possibly in the future. So that's been taken care of. Another concern that we often hear is the homes around the perimeter wanting them to be single-family or single-story homes, matching up with basically single-story to single-story, two-story to two-story. I've had an opportunity to speak to the developer about this. They are willing to do their best to meet and be neighborly. However, with 21 homes around the perimeter, and at rough guess, I think Lane Wood might have seven two-story. It really limits not only the developer to what product they can put on there, but also the future homebuyer of selecting what they want to put on that, that particular lot that they're buying and selecting. And so the developers willing to be accommodating as much as possible, but to make a commitment to say, we will match every single story with a single story. I'm, I'm not sure is, is fair, because those Lane Wood residents got to select what they wanted to put there, as did Brighton, without consideration of future development. Another concern were potential to have rear balconies on the perimeter homes that match up against existing. The developer will not be putting any, building any homes that would have a second-story rear balcony. So they agree, they have no problem with that. Melanie Macy owns an out parcel. So at the bottom right, you'll see that little out parcel. She's not part of Lane Wood, she's, I think she's on maybe one or two acres. Her concern was fencing and privacy. She, she's pretty close to the property line, and so she wanted to know what kind of fencing was going to be there, what kind of privacy she would be provided. And so the developer, developer will work with her to the extent that we have to provide what the city of Eagle code requires us to. And that's a common pathway that's adjacent to her property. Therefore, we have to provide open vision fence per your code. So that is what is intended to be there today, but, you know, the developer will talk and work with her, and again, we want to be neighborly. She does have that buffer with the common lot and then the site setbacks of that home, which would be about, I think that's 20 feet down there, so you're looking at about 27 to 30 feet. So the application request before you tonight is annexation, rezone, as we discussed, PUD with the DA, conditional use, and a preliminary platte approval. We're asking for a reduction in our two-dimensional standards from 17,000 square feet to a minimum of 10,000. We do have a range of lot sizes within our community, and anything below that 17,000 has to be, be made up in open space, which we've done and we've exceeded. Pathway easement reduction in certain places. I wasn't sure how to do this, but our report from the Parks and Pathways Commission says the easements need to be 25 feet or the width of the common lot. So we do have some that fall at 15 feet. So I don't know if it's best to show where those are and address it that way, or just make it a common lot and, because it's either or, 25 feet foot easement on the pathways or the size of the common lot. So I just want to throw that out there. We're asking for a reduction in the common, common space lot on Linder Road. Our staff report calls for it to be 75 feet, and we'd like to request that it be reduced to 50 feet, which is consistent with both north, south, and the east. So I'll quickly do this while we're on it. So this is a picture of Lane Wood, which is directly to our north. The cross-section you see there shows the 50-foot buffer, or common lot, with the 10-foot berm. We are not asking for any deviation in that. And then we'll have an eight-foot sidewalk. So the picture on the right is just representative of what has been built and approved to our north and what we're proposing to continue on our frontage. Before you is the snapshot of the Lane Wood Four, which is on your left, and the Lane Wood Eight recorded plats. If you can see, the reason I put this up here, the Lane Wood Four, final platte, which is on Linder just south of us, has a 35-foot buffer lot with no berm requirements. Then if you move further north, you'd come upon, come upon the Kingswood site. If you went beyond the Kingswood on our north boundary, you'd find Lane Wood Eight, and further north of that would be Lane Wood Seven. Both of those have a 50-foot buffer, and we are asking for that waiver to be approved to be consistent with what we have going on in our frontage. Last, site setbacks required in the R2 zone. We are asking for a few deviations from that. Everything in the black are, is what the code reads. Items in the red are requests that we're making. So our front setbacks is 30 feet per code, the R2 zone. We're requesting a 25 from the back of sidewalk to the front of the garage. Rear is 30 feet. We're requesting to have a 25-foot rear setback. And then interior sides are 10-foot, and we're requesting seven and a half with a five-foot for the second story with, which is standard, and then nothing on the street side. And those requests, the deviations, the 25-foot for the front, the rear, and the interior sides are all consistent with what's been approved in the DA's in Lane Wood as well And with that, I would stand for any questions may have.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Commissioner McCauley.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you know of the 74 buildable lots, how many are actually less than that 17,000-foot minimum?
I don't have that statistic for you. Yeah, I do not have that calculated on this.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
Follow-up on the, besides matching the, the surrounding subdivisions, were there any other reasons that you were hoping to get reductions of the setbacks?
Really, it came down to just having a little bit more flexibility with your building footprint on, on that first level. So if we had five-foot, an additional five-foot from the side in the back, that gives us, if you had a 60 by 60 footprint, that gives you an additional 600 square feet to put on a single level. It actually sometimes helps us pick out different floor plans and promote a single-story level potentially, so it just provides more options.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Gofflin.
Yes. Are you having, I couldn't quite tell, are you having beaches along the pond, or is there a walkway?
There are, there is a pathway around, yeah, there's no beaches. There is a pathway around the east side, and that would bring you by the pickleballs. There's benches that are along that side of it. There would be no pathways behind the homes, and that, we chose to do that just for privacy for the people that had those homes that will have an open vision fence there to prevent people from being behind their houses.
It'll just be grass?
It'll be grass that would then transition to a pond, owned and maintained by the HOA.
And are you planning on having one builder here or multiple builders, like sell-off the lots?
There would be one builder here.
Okay. I think that's it for, for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Gerber?
Let me ask you about setbacks again. Again, is the reason for the 20 because your lots are too small to be able to do a 30?
Twenty for what?
But if you had bigger lots, then you wouldn't have to worry about that as an option.
Are you talking about the rear setbacks?
I'm talking about the, the front, actually.
So we're requesting a 25 versus a 30?
Right.
And just to get some more depth and, okay. We'll give clarification on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gerber, did you have a follow-up?
No.
Okay. I just had some, maybe some, some generalized questions. On the pickleball court area, play, play area, I see some parking on here. How many stalls do you guys have planned for that? Is that, anybody can come and park there and use the facilities? Is it homeowners only?
It's, it is for the community. I'd imagine we'll have people from other communities visiting and parking there. But that was a request that was made of us at the pre-app, and it was recommended or asked by staff that we put a parking lot there, and I think we probably have it like eight to 10 stalls, but I don't have that exact.
Okay. And this is just more of a comment, is just with such a circular pattern here, your traffic, you know, if somebody has a family picnic there, it's going to start spilling over to the streets. We've all been there, right? We're all going to be good neighbors, but can individuals park on either side of the street on this particular?
Yes, sir, they can.
Floor, my application plan?
Yes, the roads are wide enough for on-street parking and, and clearance for cars to pass both directions.
Got it. Okay. My, my last thing is, just maybe a comment here, and if anybody has any questions afterwards, that's fine, is I noticed a lot in your presentation in comparing your application and hopeful changes to other applications that have gone before you. And I just have to say that I find that a little distasteful, and I don't mean that in a rude way, but you're holding standards to other subdivisions by other planning and zoning and other city councils, and it really doesn't, in my opinion, work that way. And a very, very few times has have I seen the commission gone down and said, well, we've done that before, we've got to keep bending. I think if anything, we usually go the other way to try to set it straight. So again, it's a comment, you can, you can address it if you want, but I find it very unfair to use that so often in your presentation, that those should be guidelines that we should consider because we've given it, because the city has given that to other applications before us. Bellaterra, if I heard Mr. Williams write, was 17 years ago. I mean, we're not even in the same, we're not even in the same, you know, bandwidth of, of city planning anymore, so anyways.
No, I, I appreciate your statement, and, and I apologize if I've made you feel that way. My point in saying that is talking about consistency and transition, and so making sure we are consistent with what has previously been approved, what is in the comp plan. So I apologize if I overdid it or I offended you. That was my point in doing that.
Ms. Miller, I don't think any offense was given. I just feel like the way that the comment was coming out is that you wanted your standards reduced to match others, and now I'm hearing the standards should be reduced so we can match others. If anything, we would want the standards to be more strenuous, so we improve the overall quality of the, the community around us to, to what we're hearing in today's.
Yeah, fair enough.
Climate of city, city planning. That's, that's what I'm getting at more than anything.
I appreciate it.
Commissioners, any final questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller. We'll have you up at the end.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, once again, Mike Williams, plain staff. Tonight before you, I have a proposal for Kingswood subdivision. I'm not going to bore you with reading through the application numbers. You've already read through the application numbers. The applicant is LGPD Utah LLC, and it wasn't represented by Jim. We already have established that. Katie Miller from Bailey actually represented it. It's 87 lot, 74 buildable, 13 common lot subdivision. Vicinity map shows, and I use this vicinity map so you can actually see. Vicinity map shows, uh, and I use this vicinity map so you can actually see, instead of just seeing, you know, a solid color, hey, this is where it's located, this allows you to see it with what's located adjacent to it as well. Concept plan, you've already seen. Uh, preliminary plat has already been presented to you. Thirty-eight-point-eight-one acres, eighty-seven lots, covered that, it's about one-point-nine-three dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size for the R-two zone is seventeen thousand. Their minimum lot size that's being proposed tonight is ten thousand square feet, however, the density does not exceed the, uh, allowed density within the area. They meet all the minimum lot widths required of the zone, they meet all the minimum street frontage required of the zone, uh, total acreage of common area, they're proposing thirteen-point-six-one acres. With the inclusion of four-point-eighteen acres of offsetting increase of open space, they're only required to provide eleven-point-eight-six acres of open space. Therefore, they exceed the required amount of open space by about four-point-five percent. And thirty-four percent, thirty-four-point-five percent of that open space is active open space, so they exceed the required fifteen percent of open space being active. The issue of special concern is, uh, deferral storage trunk line fees that's associated with our water system. Uh, the buffer width, fencing styles, uh, front setback based on location, separated sidewalk, Commissioner Gerber, I'll touch on that, that's why I looked up at Katie and said, "Let me get some clarification on that." Uh, fiber optic cable and also conservation education program, and we've conditioned, went ahead and conditioned that out as part of this development since it is a P U D. Site-specific condition number four addresses the S T L fees or storage trunk line fees. They ask for those to be deferred until their first final plat submitted. This is nothing out of the ordinary, so when their first final plat comes in, they'll have to pay this seventy-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and change, along with the, uh, S T L fees associated with that first final plat. Site-specific condition number five, and I wanna touch on this. The condition as it's proposed, when staff writes these up, we write them to the code. The code requires, since Linder Road's now a principal arterial, because we all know what's gonna be coming down Linder Road in the future, it requires a seventy-five-foot-wide buffer area. The reason for the requirement of a seventy-five-foot-wide buffer area is so you can get a higher berm, because, uh, part of the buffer requirements is you have to, within that seventy-five-foot common area, you have to have a berm height between ten and twelve feet. If you do a three-to-one slope, at ten feet, that takes sixty feet, so will not fit in, within that fifty-foot-wide buffer area. With that being said, Lane Wood to the north, also, staff had written that one up to be seventy-five-foot-wide common lot, but they proposed using a, uh, God help me here. I can't think of it, it's, it's the wall to support that berm so they could still hit the ten-foot width. Staff doesn't have a concern. If, if you wanna look at reducing that to fifty-foot in height, uh, we have a condition ready to go. So what it'll state is, provide a revised preliminary plat showing a fifty-feet-high, fifty-foot-width buffer berm with Eagle City Code section, and instead of saying, uh, eight-two-eight-seven-J-four-C, it's gonna say eight-two-eight-seven-J-four-B, and that's associated with the fifty-foot. But with that being said, we're gonna add some additional language on there, and I'll touch on that in a minute. A couple of lots under fencing plan showed, did not show open-style fencing. So on lots thirteen, fourteen, block two, and the area between lot twelve, block one, along the common property lines with those lots, they need to provide a revised fencing plan showing open-style fencing adjacent to those common lots. Now, Ms. Miller touched on the adjacent neighbor to the southeast. If that neighbor desires some privacy fencing, and since this is a P U D, and part of the P U D, you have a conditional use permit, they can request waivers of the code associated with, based on that conditional use permit. If the commission has the desire to recommend allowing a solid-style privacy fence adjacent to Ms., uh, Macy, or whatever her name was, they, they, yeah, they, they, you have the ability to grant that or recommend that for approval. What I would ask is, it's not, I have my pet names for it, but we'll just call it white vinyl fencing that you see within certain subdivisions within this valley. I'd rather see something more decorative, uh, style. I mean, there's vinyl fencing out there that resembles wood, or tan, or something, Trex decks, even anything like that, or if you go up to, uh, Reynard subdivision, which is also called Foxtail next to, uh, Fred Meyer, they have an open style to where they've set those up, it's a Trex decks, that if you're looking at it straight on, it looks solid privacy, but if you're looking at it from an angle, it's, almost looks, it looks like an open style. So if you, it's the commission's desire to allow for some form of privacy fencing, I would direct it in that direction versus, and I'll say it, an ugly white vinyl fence. I put this typical street section up here, on here for a reason, and this is where I'm gonna touch on your setbacks. What they're requesting in setbacks, they're not requesting a waiver of the front setback. What they're requesting on that waiver is twenty-five feet from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the garage. If you look at this right away, six feet of the planter strip and the five-foot sidewalk is within the buildable lot. So if you add six and five, that's eleven. And if you add, uh, eleven to twenty-five, that's thirty-six feet. So we're gonna touch on the setbacks. Front setback, what staff is recommending is thirty feet on the front, thirty-six feet for a front-load garage, and that's what Ms. Miller was requesting right there. And that's twenty-five feet between the back of the sidewalk and the front of the garage. Uh, the rear, staff is recommending twenty-five feet. Typically, in R-two zone, you see thirty feet, staff is, uh, is recommending twenty-five feet, we find that acceptable. Uh, we do have ten feet on the interior side, they're requesting the waiver to seven-and-a-half feet. Uh, the seven-and-a-half feet does allow for flexibility, it will allow for more single-story homes, and allows for a larger footprint, what she, uh, touched on, as well as flexibility in design. And then, uh, site-specific conditions number twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, twenty-two would be for the installation of fiber optic conduit to allow for future, uh, installation of fiber optic cable. And twenty-three's owner shall work with the city to establish a conservation education program, C E P funding plan, associated with Kingswood subdivision. Uh, the, your recommended conditions, you'll find them on page five for the conditions of development, page six for the site-specific conditions of approval, and page twenty-two for the standard. I'm gonna go back to site-specific condition number five. Here's the, if you choose to go with the fifty-foot, staff would recommend these changes to, where it states, provide a revised preliminary plat showing the portion of the common lots, lot thirty, block two, and lot one, block four, located adjacent to North Linder Road, at a minimum of fifty feet in width to be conformance with the buffer area common lots as required pursuant to Eagle City Code section eight-two-eight-seven-J-four-B. The height of the berm, decorative block wall, cultured stone, decorative rock, or similarly-designed concrete wall, or combination thereof, I should say, or, shall be a minimum of ten feet in height. So that way, you're still establishing what would be required within the seventy-five-foot common area. The two common areas, they're located adjacent to Linder Road in the subdivisions north and south. The one to the south is thirty-five feet, and they were not required to do a berm, and when they received their approvals on that, I have to thank Ada County, because it was actually approved through Ada County originally, that Ada County actually made them do a thirty-five-foot-wide buffer area. So when the economy tanked, they came back to the City of Eagle, because that, their approval there had died, and they did actually request the City of Eagle work with them, and the City of Eagle did work with them at the time to allow for that thirty-five-foot berm to the south, thirty-five-foot width. But the thirty-five-foot width and the fifty-foot width both only required a five-to-eight-foot-high berm, so whether it was thirty-five or fifty, they're still required to construct what's typical of that buffer. It wasn't until Lane Wood North came through, which is now Lane Wood seven and eight on, over there by Linder, that we had, uh, the classification of the road had changed to where it required that seventy-five-foot buffer. However, Lane Wood was approved with the fifty, provided they construct a ten-foot-high berm or decorative block wall or masonry wall. With that, staff would stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Commissioner Gerber?
Uh, there's an indication that there's thirty-five-point-four percent open space. Does that include, uh, the drainage ditch, uh, property as open space?
Yes, sir.
So it's kind of a benefit to have that run through there, I guess?
Well, if you, and Chairman Wright and Commissioner Gerber, if you look at anything along the river, it's kind of benefit to have a floodway as well, because you can't build in those and you get to count them towards open space.
Okay.
The, the nice thing, what I can appreciate today that we didn't have in the past, Lane Wood got to, the first portions of Lane Wood got to count out all that as open space, and they didn't do anything in there, because at that time, the City of Eagle didn't have any agreements with any of the irrigation or drainage districts. What is nice today is Mr. Noes and the City of Eagle have worked very hard with all the irrigation districts and the drainage districts and everyone else to establish easements within their easements and allow for pathways. So what used to be just this big ugly ditch with nothing adjacent to it that they got to count towards their common area, now has pathways, and in this case, I believe they have pathways on both sides of the ditch.
Follow-up, Commissioner Gerber?
Yeah, um, in regard to the storage trunk line, I'm just curious how, how they do that calculation, because I see it's seventy-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. I'm just wondering, uh, you know, what, what goes into that to come up with a fifty-eight cents that, uh?
I'm chuckling. Chairman Wright and Commissioner Gerber. I cannot say enough, I am waiting for, we're in a process right now of establishing what are called cap fees, which are flat fees, which will be collected at final plat, which will be all-inclusive of the old storage trunk line fees, the water, uh, equivalence, equivalency fee, which is established with establishing water rights, we use those fees for water rights, and the, uh, meter itself. So it's gonna be one even dollar amount. What happens is, on these S T L fees, what they're charged is twenty-one-hundred dollars per lot. A thousand fifty of that, which is half, is charged at preliminary plat, and you're looking at me going, "Well, wait a minute, Mike, how are you coming up with these odd numbers of cents?" Well, Mom was a math teacher, I spent a lot of years in retail, and I did it all on my own, no, just kidding, but the other two are truth. When you get to a certain number of lots within our S T L fee calculations, they have a formula. We can't keep it simple, leave it at a thousand fifty at preliminary plat for this number of lots. No, once you exceed seventy-five lots, it goes to this formula, which you take one-point-zero-three-something in, in the end, that's how we come up with these unique totals, and I will tell you, it's painful when we get to final plat as well.
And this is calculated by the City of Eagle?
Yes, it's calculated by staff when we go into these.
Uh, one other question.
Of course.
With your memory, how long has it been since, uh, the City of Eagle, uh, uh, actually approved a ten-foot interior side setback in a subdivision? It just seems like everything that comes through asks for seven-and-a-half on a, you know, on a single-story building, rather than the ten-foot. Does that become common now, or is it just something that happens through on the subdivisions to, to gain that, that two-and-a-half feet?
How long has it been? Well, the recommendation I believe you're sending forward tonight, and Ms. Miller can touch on this, because they're representing that application as well, the one that just came before you, right before this one, was R-two, and I believe they had ten-foot side setbacks. Lane Wood North, which is Lane Wood seven and eight, and actually, it's Lane Wood's one through, no, it's six through eight. Anyways, part of Lane Wood. The original Lane Wood development was, was approved at seven-and-a-half. When Lane Wood North came through, which is the eighty acres to the north of this, they were approved with that ten-foot required setback. The legacy development, which is also R-two, varies from five feet to, I believe, seven-and-a-half. So, how often? I'd, I can count probably on one hand how often we require ten-foot setbacks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner McLaughlin.
Um, Mike, what is the conservation and education program?
Chairman Wright and Commissioner McLaughlin, has ag properties, agricultural properties that have been utilized for agricultural historically are taken out of production? That conservation education program, what we're asking, what it involves is, it's three-hundred-dollar fee, a transfer of title, so every time that property sells, there's a three-hundred-dollar fee. And then at, the HOA will be billed five dollars per month, per unit, that all goes into a central fee, and there'll be a conservation education, uh, committee that determines how that funding is spent in regard to conservation projects and preservation of ag ground.
Thank you, I don't remember seeing that before.
It's, it's a first. Typically, what's been happening is, when, all these applications, because it's not codified by code yet, has all these applications moving forward, one of the council members or the council's been requesting the C E P funding. So most of the subdivisions that you have seen come through, uh, before you, I would say within the last year, I would say ninety percent of them have conservation education program funding requirements.
Thank you. And then, uh, the, um, do we need to make a site-specific condition, or is it gonna be in the development agreement about not having any rear balconies on any of the homes? How, how would we accommodate that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McLaughlin, that would be, you would have to add that, the area I would recommend adding that would be on, uh, condition development number three-point-four, and have that contained within their condition, their C C and Rs.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I would ask that Ms. Miller provide that, uh, information again, so if you were looking to approve this and add that as a condition, that you have the wording for that. Also, since this is being proposed by a single builder, staff would have a concern whether or not the same floor plan is boom, 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 you know, all down the street, so that might possibly need to be addressed, that they can't use the same floor plan or same elevation within certain number of homes adjacent to each other.
Have you, you've done that condition before?
Yes, ma'am, and we can, I would recommend adding that to three-point-four as well.
Um, how, how many homes do you say?
If I, the, the one we've added before is, I wanna say it's five.
Is there repetition in any, every?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner McCollough, any questions? Mr. Williams, on the Macy property, this is not the first time that, I mean, I know that's not up for consideration, but we've had that property before us, and there was some sort of funky condition with the recording of that property with the county about five or six years ago, am I correct?
And, Mr. Chairman, it actually wasn't this property, but I know exactly which one you're talking about, it was up on Lane Wood. It was a little one-acre lot that Lilac Springs surrounded, but th, this is, the only difference between that lot and this lot is this one, I think, is two acres, and the other one was one acre.
It just seemed that my memory was thinking that was...
Same general area.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and Lane Wood was mentioned several times in the middle of both presentations.
Well, and what made me trigger it was just, um, the, you know, the history of relevant previous actions, none, which still surprises me anymore that we have any, that, that's an existing sentence in any of our applications anymore, but I, I don't think we have any other, any further questions, so thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Okay. So we'll start off with, um, Mr. Gibbs and... So we'll start off with Mr. Gibbs, and we'll go on to Ms. Riley again, so Mr. Gibbs, welcome back. I do need your name and address to the record one more time, sir.
Jerry Gibbs, 1-834-NORTH-MONTEROSA-WAY, 83616, speaking tonight on behalf of the Bellatera HOA. I'm the president. One, one aspect of Ms. Miller's presentation, where she talked about concerns, Bellatera did have one concern, and that had to do with irrigation. Bellatera shares irrigation water with that property, which is presently being farmed by State Representative Mike Moyle. The last three or four years, we've worked with him to manage that water and not have water wars. It's been challenging as water in the canals have been lower. Our resident expert on, with the corporate knowledge of the Dry Ditch Corporation there, at the night of the meeting, we had an Eagle High School relayed a concern to Ms. Miller about that, and the need presently right now from the gate on Park all the way through Brush Creek and through Bellatera, that's all underground piped, it used to be open ditch. It crosses Linder now to the presently farmed area. That would be the northeast corner of the proposed development. Mr. Moyle has, through a, a system of makeshift dams, has been able to dam up that water and manage the lower levels in the canal and share the water with, with Bellatera without a conflict. We mentioned that there, if they're going to develop that and have ponds and irrigation and everything, now would be the time to incorporate a valve into that irrigation system. So if it's not too much trouble, and if Ms. Miller's ready to speak to that tonight, she committed that night at the, at the meeting to have her engineers take a look at that and do an assessment on that. So would appreciate if she has any updates she can provide on that, so I can get back to our board and our irrigation managers in Bellatera on what the plan is. Because would, you know, nothing that causes problems between neighbors than water, as you well know. So we just want to head that off, and, and we thought that now that the development's going in is the time to put a, put a valve in there, so we'd like to hear what their plan is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. Ms. Riley? And to not be repetitive, could we get your name and address?
Jody Riley, 4455 WEST MODANO DRIVE IN BELLATERA 83616.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak again this evening. At the beginning of tonight's hearing, Commissioner Gerber, before they, before you considered the motion, the item, I believe it was 3B or 3C about soaring feather, you brought up the concern, you wanted to make sure that there had been adequate notice, because there had been problems with inadequate notice previously concerning soaring feather. That's why I'm speaking to you this evening. I feel that there has been inadequate notice as well as an inadequate opportunity for the residents of Bellatera to be fully briefed and to discuss their concerns about the Kingswood subdivision. I do want to say that I don't know who the developers are for Kingswood. My concerns are specifically directed toward Bailey Engineering as the engineering firm of record for Kingswood. So as is, you know, already known, there were issues of inadequate notice for the soaring feather subdivision, which resulted in Bailey Engineering having to have a second meeting for the homeowners concerning soaring feather. For that meeting, which was held May 17th, a mailing was sent out by Bailey Engineering informing residents that there would be a meeting on May 17th at Eagle High School, and at this meeting, both soaring feather and Kingswood would be discussed. So the residents of Bellatera went, as Mr. Gibbs mentioned earlier, there were about 50 of us, 50 to 60. It was our assumption, you know, maybe bad on us for assuming, it was our assumption that first they would brief the one neighborhood, and then they would brief the other, and we would have an opportunity to hear both of the presentations, which was very important to us, because at the time, we had not had a chance, our HOA president and board had not had the chance to resolve a lot of the major concerns that we had in Bellatera about soaring feather. So hearing the presentation by soaring feather was very important to the majority of us. Ms. Miller began the meeting by asking the attendees to raise their hands, who was there for soaring feather and who was there for Kingswood. And after we all raised our hands, the majority of which we were there for soaring feather, she informed the attendees that in fact, they were going to conduct these presentations simultaneously, one at one end of the cafeteria and the other one 100 feet away or farther at the other end of the cafeteria, and we had to decide which presentation was most important to us to attend. We either could stay and listen to the soaring feather presentation, which still contained a lot of contentious items for Bellatera residents, or we could go across the room to hear about the Kingswood subdivision, which is directly west of Bellatera across Linder Road. So Bellatera residents are stakeholders, significant stakeholders in both of these communities. So a small number of Bellatera residents went over to listen to the Kingswood presentation, while most of us stayed to listen to the soaring feather presentation. However, we were not happy that this was the situation that we found ourselves in. In terms of having a Bailey Engineering rep there on our side to listen to our concerns as they were brought up and perhaps address them, the lady sitting next to Katie back there, I believe is her assistant, I can't remember her name, and she did stay on our side of the meeting for 10 or 15 minutes, but then inexplicably, she left and she went across the room to assist or listen in on the presentation for Kingswood, and she did not return to our side of the room until about five minutes before they wrapped up the Kingswood presentation. This was very concerning to us, because as we went through our concerns with soaring feather, Sheridan was not at that meeting, he was in Colorado. There were two other, his partner was there, and then they have added an additional development firm, and that gentleman was there for the very first time that night. And 75% or more of our concerns had to do with ACHD issues, as, you know, you've said, unfortunately, the city doesn't have a dog in that fight. And repeatedly, the developers' reps said, "Well, that's an ACHD thing, and that's Bailey Engineering. Bailey Engineering is the one that, that talks to ACHDs, so you'll have to talk to Katie." Katie was on the other side of the room, giving the Kingswood presentation, and her assistant, you know, fairly early in the meeting, went over there and stayed over there almost to the very end. The other issue I have, in addition to the inadequate notice, is when they sent out the notice for the May 17th meeting for Kingswood and soaring feather, the mailing included the plat for Kingswood, but it included the plat for, I believe it's now called Farmstead Landing, which is the new big subdivision to the south. The soaring feather plat was not included in the mailing. I did call and I spoke directly to Katie when we received the mailing and expressed my concern about this. She told me that the mailing had been sent out by someone else in their office who had gone to lunch, and that she would have to talk to that person when they returned from lunch to see what they, she had scanned up into their system. I guess they have some sort of file server system, and she would call me back and let me know. Never heard back from Ms. Miller. So we have an ongoing issue, in my opinion, with concerning things that have happened in the process of these neighborhoods. The inadequate notice, the incorrect mailing, she didn't get back to us, then we arrived at Eagle High School and, you know, found out that in fact, we would not be able to hear both of the presentations. You will, if you look in the records for the meetings, you will see that, or should have been, that the people who signed in for the soaring feather meeting, she said that she would include our names in the Kingswood meeting, because we wanted to show that, you know, over 50 members of Bellatera had come to the meeting. But that in no way indicates the number of Bellatera residents who were actually able to hear the Kingswood briefing. I will say that I did call and talk to Mr. Williams the next day. I expressed my concern about the fact that the meetings were held concurrently, and he said that the staff had agreed with Bailey that they could do this, because these were both kind of redo meetings. The soaring feather meeting was a redo because of the inadequate notice, and several years ago, there was an initial meeting for Kingswood. I apologize, I don't know the date of that initial meeting. I don't even know if it's the same developer at this point. I do remember that that meeting was held out on Linder Road, off on the shoulder, and someone held up the plat for what was then Kingswood. I don't even know if it was called Kingswood at the time, on the back of the pickup truck. It was 6 o'clock, it was like 97 degrees outside on the side of Linder Road. It was not a very effective meeting. Perhaps that meets the requirement of, of the staff or the commission. However, I would point out that although they did have this previous meeting, it was several years ago, and it was before there was ever a soaring feather or a Brush Creek or the Farmstead Landing subdivision. So I would argue that, while technically, this meeting may have been held for Kingswood several years ago, the entire scope of everything going around, you know, the development area has changed significantly, and...
Ms. Riley?
I know.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
I think we got the point. Can you tell me the difference between the December 8th, 2021 meeting and the, the meeting that, that happened on May? And I, I recognize you were at the other one in May, but I don't see your name either on the December 8th meeting, and I didn't know if you knew about that one and just didn't attend, but there was over 30 families that went, that attended that meeting in December.
Chairman Wright, I did not receive a letter from Bailey Engineering for the December 8th meeting, because I live in the far northeast corner of Bellatera. I was outside the notification zone.
Okay, so you are outside of the, the zone, but which is what, I think it's 1,500?
1,500 feet.
1,500 feet, it used to be 300. So that, but, okay, I just want to make sure that I've got...
No, I appreciate you saying that.
But, but do you, did you know anybody that went to the December 8th meeting?
I did not until after the fact.
Okay. Well, I'm, I just want to say that in our packet here, I mean, it looks like we've got, I mean, more than an abundant level of families for both the December 8th and maybe not as many to the May 17th meeting here, but certainly, there had to be some people that cross-referenced conversations with you on what was going on.
My immediate neighbors, because we live on the stub road where soaring feather is, I live next door to the gentleman who's on the property line, our primary focus since October has been on soaring feather. So I apologize, but no, I have not talked in depth with any of my neighbors about Kingswood.
Okay, okay.
But mostly, I want to express to you, even though there was this December 8th meeting that I was not aware of, just at the meeting on May 17th, that the vast majority, if not all, of the Bellatera attendees were, you know, very concerned that we were not going to be able to get the presentation. And I would hope that the commission would consider a motion to have Bailey Engineering have another meeting specifically about Kingswood. As Mr. Gibbs said, we have a serious concern about the irrigation water, and that, you know, the traffic, obviously, and also on the plat, it shows that the entrance to the proposed Kingswood subdivision is directly across from Bellatera. If you drive through that area, there are very few, if any, neighborhoods that have facing entrances, which is out of, you know, it, again, it continues to, to kind of erode the dynamic of the neighborhood and, you know, brings more traffic.
Okay. But Ms. Riley, just one more time, even, even if the commission did make that recommendation, and I'm, I'm not saying that it would entertain that, you still wouldn't get the notice?
True, but our HOA board has become much more proactive in the last three months because of all the development around us. For instance, I didn't get the Farmstead Landing notice. But it, you know, I think you were here that evening when we had, you know, 50 members in the neighborhood here, you know, at that meeting, you know, a couple of months ago, because the board has become much more proactive.
Okay.
I just feel that, you know, they're not going to be able to break ground anytime soon, you know, certainly not in the next couple of months. I would just ask that, because the residents of Bellatera have significant concerns about Kingswood, and many of us felt that we were deprived of that opportunity to hear about them at the May 17th meeting, especially because even though there was the December 8th meeting, yes, that, the things we talked about, for instance, at the May 17th meeting about soaring feather and the previous meeting about soaring feather, there were a lot of changes there. There had been some, you know, side work with the developer, and, you know, it wasn't just a rehashing of what we heard at the previous meeting. So I, I would ask the commission's consideration to perhaps ask Bailey to have another meeting so that the concerns of all the Bellatera residents could be part of the public record.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Commissioners, are there other questions? Commissioner Gerber?
From what I understand, your primary testimony tonight is a concern about the process rather than this subdivision specifically.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Gerber.
And apparently, there was some knowledge of the HOA about this subdivision. We heard testimony from the president indicating there was a concern about water that they're working with. You indicated a concern about the traffic, and we'll see if we've got other testimony that, you know, from people who have concerns about that subdivision, which would indicate to me, there were some people who were in that meeting that had a concern. So I appreciate your, your expression of those concerns that we can listen to and think, so...
Very much.
We might hear some things from, from rebuttal from Mr. Williams about where we are with this also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Ms. Riley, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Chairman.
Are there others in the room that would like to testify on this particular application?
All the people.
Okay. Ms. Miller, it's back to you.
Katie Miller, 1119 EAST STATE STREET, EAGLE, IDAH, 83616. Mr. Gibbs, thank you for being here. I'm going to save yours for a second. This is my engineer, Jonah Duncan. I'll let him introduce myself and talk a little bit more about the irrigation to make sure that you guys feel comfortable and we're moving forward in the right direction together. I'm sorry Ms. Riley is so upset. We did have neighborhood meetings in December for both soaring feather and Kingswood subdivision. We noticed at 550 feet, we were moving forward and were put on a P&amp;Z, well, I don't know if we're necessarily put on an agenda. We were issued a hearing date. It was then found out that we noticed improperly. We're supposed to notice 1,500 feet, and we were at 500 feet. Therefore, we were told we needed to have new neighborhood meetings for both developments. That is what we did. With conversation and working with staff, we came to the conclusion that we could hold them at the same place on that same evening and still meet our requirements. So yes, there were people within Bellatera that were not noticed on our first neighborhood meeting, and weren't noticed on the second one with a 1,500-foot radius. That said, I did have people raise their hands to make sure they knew which one they predominantly wanted to see. The developer for soaring feather was running and chose to run his own meeting while I was running the Kingswood meeting. I clearly stated before any of the groups separated and parted ways that I would be around to answer any questions, as long as there are questions to be had on either one of the projects, and I did do just that. So while Chad was running the meeting for soaring feather and I was handling Kingswood, we were running those at the same time. We got done with Kingswood before Bell, before soaring feather cleared up, and I stayed around till 8:45 at night with a 6 o'clock start until there were no more questions. So I believe there is adequate notice. Mrs. Riley went to the first neighborhood meeting for soaring feather. She also went to the second one. If she was extremely concerned, I believe she had an opportunity at the second one to go to the Kingswood meeting and hear about that and work with me afterwards on any differences on the soaring feather one, or work with her HOA who's very active now and could have communicated anything new in the development. So it's unfortunate, I'm sorry she's upset, but I believe we did everything possible and adequate to answer questions. As far as traffic's concerned and our entry road aligning with theirs, it's actually, from my experience and what I see, that's pretty typical standard and practice in what ACHD would like to see. Our frontage is not long enough, so if our entrance was to the north, we would not have enough offset to have a safe environment with the Bellatera entrance or entrance if we offset it. And then you go further north, 500 feet, you've got the Lane Wood entrance. So now you've got this arterial road being Linder, and you've got 500 feet, potentially a little bit longer, Lane Wood 8 entrance onto the street, then you have a Kingswood one, then a little bit further south from a different direction on the east, you have... you have an entry access coming in to Linder from Belatera. It creates confusion. So if we took, do you guys have internet on this? If you, if you took a look at most of the subdivisions around, roads, roads align, you want existing roads to align.
Hold on a second. We want to make sure we get the benefit of the microphone for anybody else that might be listening.
Oh, I don't have LandPro.
I know, I'm used to driving that. No, that's okay. No, I just want to, again, I just want to kind of take a look to her point. So this would be Lane Wood up here. So if we put our, our entrance road onto Linder at the north, then is this a measuring tool right here? You've probably got 500-foot offset between Belatera's entrance if we hypothetically put it up here. This all goes by ACHD. If ACHD felt it was a safer spot for us to put our road and not align it with Belatera, they would have clearly made that in their staff report and required us to change it. They did not because their typical practice, and as you can see down here, you want to align existing roads with new stub streets. Does that make, does that make sense? It, it's just a safer. If you have two people coming at each other from opposite sides, being able to make a visual connection to say, okay, I've got my signal on, I'm going right on Linder. Well, if you're heading west, westbound and you're going left on Linder, you want to have that connection and not be offset. And somebody accelerates faster than the other and it leads to a congested situation. I think I've got everything that Ms. Riley brought up. Is there any additional questions you might have for me? I'm going to bring Jonah up here to talk a little bit about the irrigation and what we've discovered and what we have in our preliminary engineering port as it pertains to the irrigation.
Why don't we hear from your engineer first and then we'll ask if there's any final questions at the end?
Okay, that's what I was up, going to bring him.
I'm Jonah Duncan, Bailey Engineering, 1119 East State Street, Eagle, Idaho, 83616.
Thank you.
Happy to hear your guys' concerns on the irrigation. Our practice has always been to work with neighboring property owners, neighboring water users at the time of construction drawing design. So whenever that would be on our schedule. In this case, I would be more than happy in inviting to meet with you guys or whoever representative from Belatera. Oh, sorry.
Talking to us.
Gotcha. We'd be happy to meet with Belatera and their representative on the water issues and work together to get a design that includes measuring devices for us and/or them if needed. Our pump station for our site, we would be designing a pump station to serve the Kingswood subdivision with our water rights of 1.1 shares, call it a little bit less. And then we wouldn't be serving anybody else with our pump station, but we would never be taking more water than we are allotted with that water share. We will equip our pump station with a flow meter to measure the water and/or a physical weir to measure it a second time.
Mr. Gibbs had mentioned that in a previous conversation with Mrs. Miller about a valve, obviously, I wasn't there. I don't think too many people were probably part of that conversation. Has that been a conversation you've had? Is that something that sounds like would be a benefit on a design like this?
It's not a conversation I've had. It may have made it to our other engineer. He's out of town right now, too. It's, yeah, it's something typical practice. We could easily throw a head gate is what I would call it on a box somewhere for them or for us.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there other questions for our resident engineer at the moment? Commissioner Gerber.
Is tonight the first time you kind of knew about this, that you had to work on it? You haven't met with like Mr. Moyle or anything like that to say, to find out what he was doing?
No, we haven't met with them or I haven't physically. I've looked at the preliminary site design. I drew some of the line work for the irrigation. So I looked and said, okay, we're getting water up in the northeast corner. This is where it needs to get to, to get through the site. This is where our pump station should go to make sense. But beyond that, I haven't done much with it.
Were you aware of making sure that there's not going to be a problem with, with the other subdivision as you move forward with this?
Yeah, I'm always happy to meet with them and welcoming. I actually encourage the meeting with neighboring water users just to make sure we're getting it right from our end as well. I don't want to be ruining somebody's water system or ruining our own somehow or expecting we're getting water all the time when it's only two days a week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you so much. Ms. Miller, any last minute comments or?
No, I don't think so. And I did speak to Kevin Craig, who's another one of our engineers in the office regarding this. It is typical practice that we look at upstream and downstream users and legally, we have no right to interrupt that. We've been designing water systems for years. One of the big things, Tony, I believe, is they're, they're, one of their water gurus, and he did approach me at the neighborhood meeting and his concern was that Belatera did not have a head gate and was worried about what if somebody didn't turn it off and what is the overflow? We would take what water is ours and any additional water, should somebody fail to close a head gate at Belatera or not control it, it would continue on downstream. As Jonah mentioned, we would have a weir or measuring device to take what rights are ours to serve our site. But it is typical practice to work with surrounding neighbors on irrigation. It is a super sensitive subject. We take it very seriously and legally, we cannot interrupt anybody's water, nor do we want to. So we're happy to do what we need to do to make sure everybody's happy. There's no question there.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Commissioners, are there questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner McCully.
Yes, thank you. There were a couple of points made throughout that I thought would pertain to you. One was the decorative fencing for the neighbor. Do you want to comment on if that's acceptable? If we end up writing that in, is that something that you're already planning to do?
It's something we are not opposed to. If you would like to write that in, we would support it and make sure that Melanie Macy is taken care of.
Okay. Similar question with the setbacks that were proposed or discussed by staff, slightly different than what you were, you were originally put in your presentation. Do those, if we accept this as written there, is that, is that going to work for? Are you accept, are you acceptable with those?
I would, I am accept.
Okay.
That includes the seven and a half side setback, correct?
Right, no, it actually says 10.
Okay, I would really like to request that we can stick with the seven and a half side setback. It, based on the product that they want to put on there, that small difference actually does make a difference in their availability to put single-story homes there.
Okay, I guess we could hit that again in a minute with staff. And then the other was the balcony and the change of the CCNRs.
Yes, we're more than happy to put that in the CCNRs if you'd like to write it in a condition of some sort, as Mike recommended, I think 3.14. We are agreeable to that on all the perimeter lots. The second-story rear balcony will not be allowable on the perimeter lots. We would like that option to possibly be available on the interior where they back to the lake. And we, we can put that into the CCNRs, which you guys do review and I'd be more than happy to make that happen.
And what about the repetition of the same floor plan?
Floor plan or elevations. Elevations, you can have the same interior floor plan and change the elevations.
Yeah.
Yes, if we can say every five elevations, we are fine and agreeable to that. But when you put a floor plan, it becomes extremely specific.
Thank you. Yeah, that's actually what I meant, Jeff. So that's fine. Okay, so maybe that's, that's all I have on the questions that we had not addressed yet with staff.
So thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Miller, I'll just stand on maybe a couple of random questions here. But one, hindsight's 2020 and having two meetings on the same night. Would you do it again that way?
Yes, I would. I think they were both handled appropriately. There were two people running different ones. And there was availability beyond a small time period to where everybody had an ample opportunity to visit both sites and have all questions answered. So yeah, I, I don't think it was handled inappropriately.
Okay. My other question would be, regardless of what the recommendation out of this, it goes on to city council. You know the process. But I don't think your issue that we're dealing with right, you know, we're talking about right now is going to go away. Do you have any plans to reach out to the community members that may still have some concerns and give them an opportunity to follow up with you directly?
I hadn't thought about it, but I'd be more than happy to. And I will commit to that. We can put a mailer out tomorrow. Everybody has my number and it was all there. And I handed out my business cards with my cellphone to anybody who wanted it. So I would, I will do that, but I also feel like I've been available.
I certainly understand your, your point of view and I appreciate what you just said so much because I don't feel it's a valid use of the city's time or your time to delay the application if that's the recommendation that this commission comes up with. But continuing to make a commitment to work and to listen, to be available, I, I just think that'll deserve everybody a great deal. So I very much appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I will follow through with that. Thank you.
Commissioner Gerber.
The thought comes to me that having two separate meetings within some proximity probably would be something that a lot of people would complain about, that they have to go on two different nights for, for these things, too, when they can kind of kill two birds with one meeting, so to speak.
Yeah. Well, we can debate that under discussion if you want to. Any follow-up or last minute questions for the applicant? Ms. Miller, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'll just stand for questions. If you need anything addressed on road alignments, irrigation or neighborhood meetings, I'll answer any questions that you may have. Also, if you're looking to recommend approval of this, her condition on the balconies, I would ask that that be added to site-specific condition number seven. Although it's not a setback, it's an item that would go to the building department. So if you want to restrict any balconies on two-story structures adjacent to the perimeter of the site, add that to site-specific condition number seven. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner McGliffen.
Mike, so you said, originally, I thought you said, put it in 3.4 under CCNRs, but now
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, 3.4, I would request that you add the restrictive number of times the elevations can be used. Add that to 3.4. And then in regard to the balconies, add that to site-specific condition number seven.
Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up? Commissioner McGliffen? Okay. Commissioner Gerber.
Where is the connection of the sewer system? Is it going to go on to Linder?
Yes, sir.
Does it run downhill to get there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gerber, probably, I would venture to say, and Ms. Miller, the engineer, can get up and address that, probably out to Linder and possibly even through their stub to the south.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCully?
Do you have any recommended verbiage for us on the fencing to help make sure we get that correct for the, for Mrs. Macy?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McCully. Site-specific condition number 24, the applicant shall work with the adjacent neighbor and you can add the name, it was Macy.
Melanie Macy.
Melanie Macy, to work with that neighbor to provide a privacy fence that is equitable for both parties that matches, let's just put, I don't know, I'll, I'll come up with something and I'll put it in your findings. I just don't recommend white vinyl.
All right.
Sorry, I'm not here to sell white vinyl.
Commissioner McCully?
I don't believe so. Thank you very much.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. Let me address the irrigation really quick. When these developments come in at preliminary, they have, the applicant has to provide their water shares, certificated water shares. They have to show the city certificates. They have to provide pressurized irrigation calculations based on how many irrigable acres that they're going to have in the end. At any time, and I will tell you, these are scrutinized. Right down to when they're installing the pump in these pump houses, they're scrutinized down to the point that that pump can't pump more water than what they're entitled to. This is a downstream user. And like Ms. Miller touched on, if additional water comes through that they're not entitled to, they have to allow that to pass on. State statute 313805 clearly covers irrigation. And that's why the city is adamant when we review irrigation plans to ensure that they're not doing something to allow them to use more water than what they're entitled to based on their certificated water shares. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Commissioner McCully?
I actually do have one more. It's back to the, the side setback. So, so the recommended, the city recommendation was 10 feet. We'd heard from the applicant requesting 7.5. If I remember correctly, you say, if I understood correctly, you said that very rarely are they held to that. So am I to understand that the city would not oppose the 7.5 setback instead of the 10-foot setback?
The ci, this is a, this is a condition you use for a preliminary development plan. They're, they're requesting waivers and that's the tool that you use for those waivers. If the commission so chooses to allow for a seven and a half foot setback, you're well within your parameters to do that. If you don't feel they deserve a seven and a half foot setback and you're fine with restricting them to the 10-foot, what's typically required by code, you can send that recommendation on as well. The, I, I will say, and not sell the development, but the seven and a half will allow for more single-story and it actually allows for more, it doesn't allow you to exceed the lock coverage, but it keeps everything without having to go vertical.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we would not be doing anything outside of perhaps recommended by, by the city, so.
Commissioner McCully, I think you've, you've maybe noticed the city's a lot more careful and think each year getting even more careful about what they say they will or won't support when asked directly from us or the city council because it is a recommending body. The language was 10 feet for a reason because that's what it has to be written to. Again, like the other conversations you and I've had or other conversations with the commissioners, you know, I'm sure that if we wanted to say two feet, you know, staff might, okay, wait a minute, you know, let's talk about this some more, but.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
More questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this point, we will close the public hearing on item 5B and go into discussion amongst ourselves. Anybody care to get us started? Commissioner McGliffen?
I guess my only comment is I can agree with most things, even the 50-foot berm, if we change it to that condition. I, I really, I'm struggling. I don't, I'm not really in favor of moving the setbacks to seven and a half. I think there's enough wide lots in there, they can put single stories. You know, we keep reducing it. They need to widen the lots. We're cramming them in and I think it just is, is a detriment to how the subdivision ends up looking. I'm more, I would be more comfortable leaving them at 10 feet. That's just my opinion. The other conditions I'm fine with, but I, I, I can't support it with, with seven and a half foot setbacks. I, I think there's enough lots there that they could do single stories. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McGliffen. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gerber.
Perhaps a compromise off this would be something that basically says houses must be a, a minimum of 17 and a half feet apart, which means somebody's going to go 10 feet, somebody's going to go seven and a half. And whoever gets there first gets the 10-foot or the seven and a half and the next person's going to have to deal, deal with 10 rather than a full 10 on all of them.
Seven and a half feet is how much it's like this. I just, I, I'm, I'm really struggling with continuing to give with continuing to give accommo, oh, I'm sorry, I'm really struggling with continuing to give accommodations. They know what the requests, the requirements are. Stick to the requirements. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the one who raised the issue, and the reason was because I, as I've driven around, it just seems like we're getting a, we have a lot of houses starting to, you know, encroach on each other, whatever, and that really isn't what our desire is in Eagle, I guess. Everybody talks about needing elbow room and things, and then we make these decisions that kind of are contrary to what the desire of the community seems to be whenever they're talking or whatever. And I realize that we've had some that have gone to the seven-and-a-half, but it doesn't mean that we have to do it with all of them. So, I'm, you know, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner McLaughlin on this.
Okay, long as we're chatting.
Commissioner McCauley carried a way in.
Yes. I think we all have the same overall objective, and that is to keep this nice and pretty. And if we did everything we could to encourage single-story houses, we'll probably have more single-story houses. What makes things feel crowded are when you've got multiple two-story houses side by side. I think aesthetically, is a little bit more crowding. And there are subdivisions very close to this. Corey Barton is a good example of someone that builds a lot of two-story houses right by each other. And if two-story houses are 10 feet apart versus one-story houses, seven-and-a-half feet apart, I think aesthetically, it would feel less crowded, even though they're technically closer together, because of the tall height right next to each other. So, I don't think we disagree on the objective. I think we're just discussing subjective issues, which we probably aren't going to solve here. But I think that's probably why there would be a legitimate reason to go a little bit closer together, is to encourage as many single stories as possible.
Commissioner McCauley, I hear what you're saying, but I have to tend to agree with my other two commissioners here, because we're not talking about going to seven-and-a-half feet, and they have to be singles, you know, a height limit on any of these. We're just saying they need to be, we're considering the recommendation of going to seven-and-a-half. They could still go, we could still give this to them, and because we've not put any further recommendations in there, they could do multiple-story houses all through, and then we really have a pact. I'm not saying that's the plan, but I think that we need to be careful when considering those options of, well, if we do this, it's going to be more single, I keep saying single-family, single-story homes. But if you're going to talk about limiting it to single-story, because that's what you feel is good planning and good zoning, then it needs to be accompanied with further discussions that only so many houses of the buildable lots can be of a certain height, and other ones can also be, you know. And we've done that multiple times. You know, think about the subdivision right up against Eagle Hills Golf Course. Remember, every other one had to be of a different height, and that was not wildly appreciated by the applicant, but it was something that needed to be done.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gerber.
I guess I would like to ask Mr. Williams, isn't there a requirement, if you, right now, single stories are 10 feet, if you go up on a two-story building, don't you have to do even additional setbacks?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gerber, that's correct. So, whether you're at seven-and-a-half or 10 feet, that's your first story. Your second story has to have a 5-foot setback, unless your house, I call it wedding cake, tear, whatever you want to call it. If the second story doesn't start until 5 feet in from that first story, you can keep your first story setback. What I'm hearing is there's concern with the seven-and-a-half-foot setback from two of you. From one of you, I'm hearing that perhaps we can split this, you know, 15 on one side, 10 here. Please don't do that to us. It's a tracking nightmare. I'm going to throw something at you. There's varying lot with, and I want to add, Commissioner McCauley, and you've had the whole discussion on this tonight as well, about the whole single-story thing. Unless you make a condition, some kind of condition in there, saying you have to have this many single-story, or you're going to locate single stories on these lots, and if you want to go down that pathway, we'll sit down with a plat here right now on this table, and you'll identify the lots, and then you'll have to make that part of the condition, that's going to be fairly tedious. Let me propose this. If you have a concern with seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks, what if, on the side setback, any lots 90 feet in width or greater shall have a 10-foot setback, and any lots that are any 9 feet or less in width can have a seven-and-a-half-foot setback? I'm just throwing that out there.
Good idea.
That's what I said. Anybody care to add conversation to that?
I agree with what you said.
Oh, shoot.
I don't think we want to open it back up, but it'd be interesting to know if that would be approved or supported by the applicant, or if that would not be. We're trying to, I mean, we're not here to cater to them, right? We're doing what we're doing, but we're trying to make the best product possible. And I have found typically, the market dictates what, it usually dictates the best project. And the reason that we would even add more square footage is because even though, even though it's not going to be mandated, and I agree, we don't want to sit down and mandate each one, it provides incentives to do that. And people will probably be a lot less likely to do two stories because, or excuse me, to do one stories on the smaller lots, because you just can't get a big enough house for the market to appreciate it. So, I'm fine letting it go. It just seemed like a good objective to help encourage, and one that the applicant was favorable towards. So, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner McLaughlin?
So, are you saying you'll support just 10 feet, or you want to do this 70, seven-and-a-half on 89 or less?
Um, yeah, I thought that was a good, a good way to give as much flexibility for the market to sort itself out. So, I don't know how many that implies. I was even asking earlier, and it looks like, it looks like about three-quarters of the lots are smaller than 17, even though we've got the right density. They are...
Smaller than 90 feet across?
No, they're smaller than the, they originally mandated 17,000 square feet. So, the bulk of these lots are 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lots. So, I don't know, I don't know how many that would be off the top of my head.
Based on width rather than...
Yeah.
Square footage.
Just looking quick here.
I think we stick to the, I say, stay with 10. I, because why do we keep, I just always feel like sometimes they're jamming as many as possible in. And if we stick to our, our conditions that are in the code, then we'll encourage maybe fewer lots. We're not asking for them to remove any lots.
Commissioner Gerber, did you have a follow-up?
I just think, you know, what Commissioner McCauley's saying makes sense, that if we do the seven-and-a-half, we're likely to get more single-story than we are if we... Is that right? Or more double. If we, the closer we have lot, houses together, the less likely they are to be double, two-story. Is that...
Well, I don't think that's our purview to decide that. I think the market will decide that. There are lots that will accommodate single-story homes. But as I said, this is just my opinion.
Why don't we move on to some of the other issues, and then see if we can come back around to this and get to a decision, if that's okay? We've got the issue of the berm to consider, and you've heard the conversation from Mr. Williams and from Ms. Miller. Is there concerns there, or general consensus?
I'm okay with the 50-foot berm, with the fence on top.
Okay. What other issues would we like to tackle in the meantime, before we get to the point of making a motion? Got a lot of notes there. Commissioner McCauley?
I think we've, I think we've hit all the ones that I had notes on. I'm, I'm okay with it. I think the only question that we're still debating in my mind is the, is the site setback.
Okay, so, taking the question, and, you know, we need to get to a logical conclusion here, that we don't all have to agree on this. But, you know, if the maker of a motion is ready to make a motion, I think we're always in order for that. I don't like getting into a place where we're putting the plat out on a table and picking winners and losers arbitrarily. None of us are, you, somebody might be skilled in that, but that's certainly not me. That was my comment about, you know, saying if we go to seven-and-a-half, you're going to encourage. We don't know that. So, either, either we make the seven-and-a-half and stick with it, or stick with the staff recommendation to 10 and be quiet. Or, we could come up with something in the middle, but again...
Or we can go with the, lots that are 90 feet or more, go 10 feet, and those are less, the 89 and less go a seven-and-a-half. Seems like another option. If Commissioner Smith was here, he would figure out how many lots we're talking about, probably.
And Commissioner Gerber, I don't disagree with you, but again, it seems like an arbitrary, you know, condition to put on there, that we're, again, we're picking, not winners and losers, but we're picking based on a number that Mr. Williams has thrown out. I mean, there's some science behind that, don't get me wrong, but again, that's, is that what we're here to do?
No. I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, if we're ready, or if we're not, then we can discuss more.
Commissioner McLaughlin, a motion is always in order.
Okay. I will make a motion to recommend for approval A-13-21/RZ-19-21/CU-10-21/PPUD-0-21/PP-20-21 Annexation Rezone with Development Agreement, Conditional Use Permit, Preliminary Development Plan, and Preliminary Plat for Kingswood Subdivision, LPGD Utah LLC, with the following, including all staff recommendations and conditions, site-specific conditions of approval with the following changes. On condition 3.4, we would add that there would be no repetition of elevation within every five houses. On site-specific condition number five, that the berm be reduced to 50 feet wide with the condition of the city code, I hope I get this right, 8-2A-7J4B, which would add a 10-foot fence on the top of the berm to accommodate the reduction in width. On site-specific condition number seven, all setbacks will remain as provided by city staff. That we add condition number 24, that a type of vinyl decorative fencing will be placed next to Ms. Macy's home. And did we need to add a site-specific condition about the valve and the irrigation ditch, or that's just, will be accommodated? That, I think that's it. I think I have everything.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. Commissioners, we do have a motion before us. Is there a second? Okay, seeing no second, the motion fails.
It really comes right down, like, the only, the only thing we're talking about is a site setback, then, correct?
That's the difference of opinion.
Yeah. So, neither of the other of you are wanting to, even though you...
Seven-and-a-half.
Yeah, even though that's the only thing stopping us, and it sounded like you were in support of that, would you not?
What, my?
Where else are we going to go?
All right, I'll second it. I'll second the motion.
You're seconding mine?
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, we do have a motion and a second.
I think Mike has some.
Before us. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McLaughlin, under site-specific condition number seven, I missed it, maybe you stated it. Did you say anything about the balconies adjacent to the perimeter?
Oh, I forgot. I forgot to add that. No, yes, no balconies on second stories in the exterior lots. Thank you for adding that. I missed that one. I had it written down.
Commissioners, real quick, when we, we've got to be a little bit more formal when we amend our motions.
You want me to?
So, I just, I'd like to amend my motion to Commissioner McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to amend my original motion to add, under site-specific condition number seven, a provision that no balconies will be placed on second-story homes on exterior lots.
Thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin. Commissioner Gerber, does your second still stand?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerber. Commissioners, we do have a motion and a second before us. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye as well, motion passes. Thank you, commissioners. Finishing off with our agenda this evening, item number six, new business. We have none before us this evening. Item number seven, reports, reports from the commission.
The only thing, the comp plan committee continues to work. We will be looking at the final draft of it, that will then go to the City Council, and then we get it back here at Planning and Zoning for public hearings. So, that will be coming up, I would guess, in probably a month or two.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerber. Any other reports from the commission? Commissioner McLaughlin?
May I ask a question? Commissioner Gerber, are there any major changes that you see, or is there a lot of changes coming?
Most of the changes are updates on guidelines, that are numbers on populations, and yada, 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 those kinds of things that all needed to be updated. But I can't think of any real big changes as far as...
Densities.
Densities in some areas and things. Like, the way it's kind of gone about, I'm not sure what we're going to end up with, because we broke up into a lot of groups, and we're going to now see what all those people recommended as far as changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Reports from our city attorney? Now's your time to speak.
Yeah, now I got something to say. Chairman Wright and commissioners, there is no report from the city attorney today. Thank you.
Well done. And reports from our city staff?
I can't remember. I'm trying to remember what was just approved by the council, and I didn't write it down. I apologize. I do want to discuss one item, though. And I didn't want to get into this debate during that public hearing, but I want to discuss the neighborhood meeting issue. What they did with the neighborhood meeting was supported by staff, and here's why the neighborhood meeting was supported by staff. They could easily have scheduled those neighborhood meetings, and you touched on it slightly, Commissioner Gerber. They could have sent out two notices, one for each of those subdivisions, and put those on each end of the city. And when Ms. Miller called me and asked, can we do this at one location, at the high school, and put it, like, you know, at each corner of the gym, I said, that's... and put it like, you know, at each corner of the gym, I said, that's actually providing a service, in my mind, to all those property owners, because that allows them to attend each of those meetings at one location. Because like I said, pursuant to the code, they could have sent out the notices and scheduled one here at city hall and put one out there at the site. Now, the 1,500, and the reason they had to go through the staff requirement to do that second scheduled neighborhood meeting is because they had noticed at 550 feet, and the actual notice requirement was 1,500 feet. When Ms. Riley touched on, well, years ago, they had it out there on-site, and it was 97 degrees, and, you know, hardly anybody was notified. Well, years ago, there wasn't a lot of people out there, for one. But, and you touched on it, Chairman Wright, years ago, our notice requirement was 300 feet. It wasn't 1,500 feet. It was 300 feet. And onsite, actually, when it comes right down to it, we like them when they're onsite, because then you can look at what's around you. You know, it's nicer when in the summer, it might be a little bit hot, but it's not in the middle of the winter when it's cold and snowing, or also not when it's spring or fall, when it could be blowing and raining. So staff did support them on what they chose to do. Now, if you question the process, the process was remedied. Ms. Riley was here, and she testified. The process was remedied. There is opportunity, and that's why the city, and that's why we require that notice to 1,500 feet. It allows for people, if they have a concern, to come to the respective bodies and voice that concern, because then they're getting addressed by the decision-makers, not by the applicant. The actual policymakers get to make that decision. So if there's a concern, these neighborhood meetings work two ways. They work for the developer, because the developer can get to hear those concerns early and possibly address them. And in Mr. Hobson's case, he worked very closely and tried to address everything he could. Kingswood, you know, I don't know. They didn't follow up on any contact, but it is a two-way street. But also, it works towards the applicant, because the applicant does get to voice any concerns. And it, excuse me, not the applicant, the neighbor does get to voice concerns, and it gives the applicant to make any changes to that application if they so choose. What if an applicant, excuse me, not an applicant, what if the neighbor has all these concerns, and the applicant basically just shines them on? And we've seen it happen. You've seen it happen. I'll guarantee you I've seen it happen. And they'd say, you know what, we're just gonna proceed with it the way it is, and we'll see how it flows, and that's why we have public hearings, because that gives the neighbors the opportunity, they're all notified, to actually come to the neighborhood, come to the public hearing and testify to request change. And with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody have questions?
Just a comment. It seemed like, to me, in this case, if there were a lot of concerns out there, there would be a lot of people here, and I didn't see a whole lot appear here other than the president of the HOA, who God bless his soul, has to put up, I'm sure, with an awful lot of things. I hear nothing but, but good things about the poor people who become presidents of HOAs.
When, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gerber, I have a lot of respect for the presidents and who sit on these HOAs. When they call me, I always, first of all, apologize that they got, chose the short straw.
Yeah.
But there's some great people out there serving these positions. I'm not just saying that because you're here. I don't envy what you have to do and what you guys have to deal with, because we hear it day in and day out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the pain.
Okay. Any comments from planet, are future meetings coming up?
I don't think.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Some.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Don't forget to recycle your maps if you go.